I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Little of the newly renovated Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Great-looking church. Come on down.
Thank you for the invitation, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's grateful to be here, and it's been a beautiful day in Holly Springs. Let us pray. Hey Almighty and gracious God, we give thanks for the beauty that we see in springtime. We give thanks that all things that are dormant become new and spring forth to life. We give thanks for the trees that bud, the flowers that bloom, the birds that sing. We give thanks for the newness that you put within us and within our community in springtime. We pray, God, that you move our fears, God, into our strengths, our doubts into our faith. God, our concerns and moments and opportunities to show that you are alive and working something new. God, we ask that you continue to bless and put newness into Holly Springs, this wonderful community, God, that you planted here years ago. We pray that you be with our leaders, God, to give them wisdom and guidance as they move us forward. We give thanks for our first responders. We give thanks for the many staff that work at this city. We give thanks for all the schools we have and the teachers that make a difference in the lives of young people. And God, we ask that our schools continue to please safe havens where people can learn and be accepted for who they are. God bless this meeting tonight. Give us wisdom, give us strength, give us patience. In all things, we thank you and praise your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Item number four, adjustment approval of April 17, 2018 meeting agenda, Mayor Porten.
Motion to approve, April 17, 2018, with no changes. Second?
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And by the way, Councilwoman Sherri Lee will be here, but a little late. Number five, public comment period. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And the first one up is Gerald Holloman. Clock hasn't started yet, Gerald. I hear ya.
Good to see everybody here.
Hold on.
I want to throw a little history for you.
Go.
And I was born in Harris Lake, where Harris Lake is, in 1936. I moved to Holly Springs in '42, and I stayed gone 17 years. And I decided to come back home in 1980, and they called me in the file and for mayor. And I won in 1981. And the town was one mile square. All the people you could talk to between 600 and 900 people here. No sewer system, water system. The lady wrote the bills by hand because we didn't have as many customers, because we didn't run as many lines. And I said, what in the world am I going to do? Yeah, I'm down the block building, which all tore down. And we had our first meeting down there, and I said, what have I got myself into? And then I suddenly found out after a little while, I learned that it's not what you know, it's who you know. Understanding that, not what you know, but who you know. So I went to Washington, DC a few times, got to know the governor, got to know his chief of staff and everything. And I spent a lot of time in Washington, DC getting, I think David Price was there, Jesse Helm was there, and I think another was in the house at the time, the senator now, Richard Burr, and I got to meet him. But that's how Holly Springs got to start, because seventeen and a half million dollars was raised in about nine years to improve everything here. And I sit in the same chair that Mayor Sears is sitting in, and I have people around me. And that's the reason that all y'all are here, because Kerry tried to annex us twice. They called me at the Kerry, wanted to know if we wanted to merge with Kerry. And I said, no, we don't need to be within Kerry. And then they called me back the second time. Glenn Lane called me back, bought me a hot dog over there at Kerry, one of them's on the bird's stew. I said, Glenn, the other guy bought me a steak. But anyway, I encourage you to not think that you know how to do it all, because our government is a very, how can I say this nicely?
Complex.
You've got to know somebody to get anything done. Now, you can pass stuff and raise taxes on people here all you want to, but I'm telling you, they give out a lot of money in Washington, DC. I'm a, I know that. So I encourage you to take the time, the town has the money to send you up there for three or four days, to sit down, have lunch with David Price and Richard Burr and George Holley and whoever else you can find. Get to know their staff members. Go to the governor's office, get to know the chief of staff in the governor's office. Get to know those people at the board of transportation. Know who the transportation board of members that works here, because that's how this highway got funded back here, called the 55 bypass. The town even put a dime in there, needed few credit effects. That was all funded because of our efforts, my efforts with the board of transportation. I knew someone in the governor's office, I knew someone on the board of transportation, and it finally got funded with Feden Salamander. I encourage you, please get to know the people that have the money. I don't want to be paying for something when y'all get money from somebody else. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thanks, Gerald.
Next, Gerald Palumbo. Or Jeff Palumbo, excuse me. Antonia Palumbo.
We'll have one right after the other. That'll make it a little bit easier for your six minutes worth of time. My name's Jeff Palumbo. For the record, we are not here on behalf of any candidate, business, or organization, including the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce. We are here as residents who love the town of Holly Springs and who have been unfairly targeted, bullied, and personally attacked by Mayor Dick Sears, his family, and some of his supporters. Mayor Sears, we stand before you tonight asking for a public apology from you for both defaming our names and repeatedly overstepping your scope of authority. Standing here tonight is not what we hoped for. We made three separate attempts to handle this ongoing matter behind closed doors by meeting with you personally. You refused to meet with us and quoted the Sunset Meeting Statute, a statute that does not seem to exist. Where the slogan of my door is always open, it is clearly not open to us. This is why we're here tonight. In December of 2017, I applied to be on the Holly Springs Planning Board. On January 15, 2018, you overstepped your scope of authority and defamed me and my wife by asking the town council not to recommend me for the planning board. Your email to town council, Gina Clapp, Daniel Weeks, and Chuck Simmons, said, and this is directly from the email, "I am asking your consideration not to elect Mr. Palumbo, who has posted on Facebook that the mayor is an 'asshole.' His wife posted the same comment on Facebook prior to the campaign and once during the campaign. This entire statement is a blatant lie. You lied about the type of people my wife and I are bolstered, are, uh, my wife and I are to bolster your own agenda. Town council members Barry and Kelly spoke up about your false accusations. I encourage all residents to read these responses and how these two council members stood up for the residents being unfairly attacked by the mayor. You took this a step further by forwarding Dan Barry's response to the town attorney with a note, 'It may be a cold winter.' This is not the way you should treat council members who disagree with you and hold you accountable. Copies of the correspondence will be submitted to the town clerk to be entered in the meeting minutes. Although I have a litany of examples of similar behavior, our time is limited. It is indeed quite telling that to accurately describe the various examples of your thuggish behavior towards my wife and me would take more than two speakers are allowed at this meeting. Mayor Sears, we deserve better from you as residents, taxpayers, business owners, and good members of the community. Your position should not be abused, nor should it be used as a weapon to hurt those who speak up against you and become involved. We did not cyberbully you or anyone. I have not called you an asshole, although after hearing this, many would agree, I probably have the ability to do so, and they would not say anything. Mayor Sears, your influence should not be dangled over local organizations serving our community. Overstepping your scope of authority in reference to my application for the planning board and defaming our names is unacceptable. Because of your untrue statements about our character, quoting statutes that don't exist, we are asking you for a public apology. My three minutes is over.
We realize that there will be backlash after this meeting tonight. There will be many who will say that this is a political ploy. However, we will submit documentation, including emails and screenshots, to prove that this is not political. Rather, this is about your personal vendetta against me and my family. This began in June of 2015, when you consulted with the town attorney and even considered having me and another resident charged for cyberbullying merely because we were admins of a local Facebook page. This was after we opted not to remove over a dozen negative reviews about a local business that supported your mayoral campaign in 2013. In November of 2015, I was contacted by a reporter from Raleigh Magazine. I responded to her call to later find out that this was a piece being written by her with your assistance targeting the ladies of Holly Springs. The most disturbing piece of this interview is when you said, "I think this person has a psychosis. This person is scary." I was furious and disgusted that you would make such a statement to the media about me or any other resident for that matter. It's unbecoming of an elected official, and you should be ashamed. In early March 2017, you expressed to many your discontent with me teaching a social media class to local business owners through the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce. When a friend shared something to her personal Facebook page from your anti-bullying campaign, I did, in the depths of feeling of helplessness and victimization, write the words, "The mayor is an ass." But since you have continued to attack me and my business and my reputation while abusing your power of authority, your power by attempting to cancel a class organized to support small business owners, I lashed out. This is something that I should not have done. I am sorry that I did that. However, I am a private citizen. You opted to discuss this incident on March 21, 2017, during a town council meeting, and reached out to the News &amp; Observer as well. This was the same week that a young teenager committed suicide in our community after being bullied. Instead of you offering your condolences and addressing this bigger issue at hand, you turned the spotlight on yourself because a resident called you, in your words, a three-letter word that started with the letter A and ended with the letter S. You played the victim. You were petty. This comment by me was posted for less than 30 minutes, but it has turned into a reason for you to keep up with your vendetta against my family. On August 21, 2017, former councilman Dixon sent an email to Assistant Town Manager Mr. Weeks with the subject titled, "Relationship with Chamber at Risk." In this email, I was accused of lashing out at town council members on social media. These accusations are 100% false, and no screenshots or proof were ever provided. In mid-October, Dr. Adrian Wood of the popular blog Tales of an Educated Debutante interviewed you about the town's Halloween ordinances. You made comments that do not speak for the majority of residents in Holly Springs here in our community. Most residents believe that Holly Springs is an all-inclusive community that welcomes children of all ages from all communities, including those from Fuquay Varina. This interview received national attention, and it was an embarrassment to this town. In the following days, my name was plastered all over the reelected Mayor Dick Sears Facebook page by your family and your supporters, claiming that I was the mastermind of what is now referred to as Halloween Gate. This is yet another false accusation. I had never heard of this blogger or her blog. We are not friends. Dr. Wood attempted to defend her words, including saying that she knew nobody in Holly Springs. This happened on your, again, reelected Mayor Dick Sears page. Her comments were repeatedly deleted, and eventually she was blocked from commenting any further. To this day, it baffles me as to how my name even got brought into this by your family and supporters. Mr. Sears, Halloween Gate was not my scandal, that was yours. And less than two weeks ago, at a Chamber of Commerce event, your wife and friends used juvenile intimidation tactics to try to make me leave the event. These actions were taken in front of witnesses who are Holly Springs business owners, charitable organizers, and one elected official. She should be embarrassed by her childishness. She should be ashamed that her behavior made local business owners uncomfortable at an otherwise celebratory event. Mr. Sears, you have attempted to ruin my good name with the Chamber of Commerce and in this community. Your family and ardent supporters have libeled and slandered me, and you have not only allowed it, but you have encouraged it. Mayor Sears, your bullying of us needs to stop right here and right now. You are the leader of this town. A good leader creates an inspiring vision for the future and motivates people to engage with that vision. What is your vision? You, your family, and your supporters, many of whom have never met me, continue to divide this town. Jeff and I will continue to love this town and contribute to it in any positive way that we possibly can. My husband and I want a public apology to not only clear our names, but to take a step forward in bringing this town closer rather than continuing to divide it. We have folders for all of the town council members, including the town clerk, a proof of everything that we have said, emails and screenshots to provide, so everyone can look at it.
Well, while you're doing that, I want to officially say I deny most of the things you said. However, versus making this a debate, which is very unfortunate, I will ask my attorney to get in touch with you later. It won't be, it'll be mine, thank you. That was not necessary also. Next up is Christine Waller's. Name and address, please, Christine.
Say that again?
Name and address, please.
Christine Waller's, Covenant Rock Lane. It's disappointing I have to follow that, but...
I understand.
Anyways, um, I'm just here to, this was unplanned, but I'm just here to speak about, under New Business, number 10, item B, consider awarding contract to Wake County Public School System for lengthening the right turn lane from Avon Ferry Road to Castle Road, and a budget amendment to see that through. I've lived here for almost 10 years, and I know there's been active discussion about this turn lane from Avon Ferry turning right onto Castle, to something we've needed for a very long time. I've actually spoken to you directly about it about five years ago. I suggested that the town actually sort of in a show of good faith to the DOT, perhaps pay for just repainting the area, because it was painted in a way that allowed a turn lane into Holly Glen that's unnecessary. And there's enough pavement there for two cars to fit. So anyways, that hasn't happened. There's been developers that have come forward, that it was supposed to be funded, but the developments have fallen through, whatever, over the years, a lot of things have happened. So I really just wanted to speak on behalf of everyone that lives and travels from, you know, the Harris Lake end of Avon Ferry up to Castle, and then further past Castle, just that it is time that we finally take care of this. And if it means the town needs to move around some money to make this happen, I really hope that now is the time that the town does vote to see this through. You know, everybody's impacted by the high school. Well, not everybody, you might be impacted by their traffic. But, you know, it affects a lot of people, not just the neighborhoods that are over there already, but we've got so many more neighborhoods coming in, as we all know, and the developments that are coming in. There's for sale signs, new ones on Avon Ferry as we speak. So I just hope that if we do get to this item tonight, that everyone would see fit to approving, you know, transferring the rest of the money that's needed to see that turn lane happen. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Moving right along. Item number six, special presentation, recognizing for U-Boys All-Star Basketball Team for winning the statewide athletic committee or contest for the state championship SWAC. And I think it's going to be Chris Champion.
All right, my name is Chris Champion. I'm the Athletic Programs Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department. We are here tonight to recognize and celebrate the achievements of the 14-U Boys Basketball All-Star Team. This team recently competed in the statewide Athletics Committee Tournament against other All-Star teams from around the state. The boys had very little time to gel as a team, but through their hard work, dedication of their coaches, and their parents, they finished as 14-U state champs. As a result of the outstanding young athletes we have in our community, these types of recognitions have become somewhat commonplace for our All-Star teams. We have had quite a few state champions in soccer and baseball over the past few seasons, but this is the first basketball team to win a state championship in Holly Springs in quite some time. On behalf of our department, I would like to thank all of the parents and coaches for their support of this team and our program as a whole. I will now turn it over to Coach Keiger for a few words and to recognize his player.
Thank you, Chris. That was, that was well said. My name's Chris Keiger, and it was, Mayor, council members, thank you very much for recognizing these young men. It was certainly a pleasure of mine to have coached them, to have gotten to know them. And, you know, any All-Star team, it's sort of an interesting meshing of players, because obviously these kids were the best players on their rec team. So to take the 10 best players out of the rec league and then put them all together, and you have a week, you know, to work on things and get them to gel, and have them accept their role as not being the best player on the team anymore, for a 14-year-old, it's not an easy thing to accept. And I gotta say, these kids did it marvelously. This is a real talented group. They represented the town very, very well. We cruised through the district, beating everybody by 20 points, and then we went to the state tournament. I was sort of wondering if we were gritty and tough enough, and I found out real quick because we lost the first game in a double-elimination tournament. And if you've ever been in a double-elimination tournament, you know that's not what you want to do. So we battled out of the loser's bracket, ended up beating the same team twice in the championship to bring, to bring home the tournament. So, like I said, I can't say enough about these kids. They worked hard in the short time we were together. They came together, represented the town with class, and played really, really, really good basketball. It was an honor and a privilege to have coached them. And for all of our hard work and effort, this by no means, I think, reflects that, but this is, this is the plaque, this is the, this is the plaque that they gave us, recognizing, recognizing the state tournament victory. But with that, thank you all very much. Thanks again to all the kids and the family for putting up with me for a few weeks. Like I said, this group really represented the town well, and we're thrilled to be here tonight. I'm gonna call each one of them up and recognize them individually. This just happens to be the first one up who has to put up with me every day, my son, Nathan Keiger. Trevor Volk. Joey Phillips. Thomas Harris. Logan Jacobson. Edward Kunis. Michael Lyon. Kayden Sigmund. Jaden Winter. And we are missing one, Ahmad Musa, who's not with us this evening.
See, the boys usually see me on the basketball court, they don't realize I do this at night, so. Sorry, Dick, I'm sorry. Jane 97A, request communication, the Farmer's Market Season 12 Grand Opening. Jessica Stiglitz, better known as, whatever. Pebbles. It's a great name.
The mayor calls me Pebbles. It's my nickname from college, so that's how he knows me. I'm here to invite you tonight to the 12th season grand opening of the Farmer's Market on May 5. We are the number one farmer's market in North Carolina, and that is from the American Farmland Trust Farmer's Market Celebration each year. And we are actually number 11 in the country, which is pretty exciting. So we hope that you will come on out and visit us. We'd, I'd like to take a few seconds to thank our sponsors this year. GMA Supply Building Materials is our blue ribbon sponsor for the fifth year in a row. And Ting is stepping up a little bit this year as our Beats and Jam sponsor, which is our other major sponsorship, and I don't think any of them are here tonight. Few pictures for you. We have almost 30 vendors this year, and I'm excited to say that we have about seven produce vendors this year, so we've really been able to bump that up. So we've got meat and eggs. We are adding seafood this year, which is pretty exciting. During the beginning part of the season, you can get garden, you know, starts and flowers. And we have a huge range of artisanal foods. We're excited to announce that La Farm Bakery is joining us this year. There's been quite a bit of buzz about that. Slice Pie Company, I think I'm gonna gain about 40 pounds this season. I'm gonna have to walk that off. We've got goat and cow cheese. We've got Prepared Foods, Billiams, which is a local company right here in Holly Springs. We'll be doing sandwiches, soups, and salads that you can take home from the market. We have coffee from a family farm in Honduras, which is really delicious. And of course, we've got sauces, seasonings, condiments, honey, preserves, pretty much anything that you would want from the Farmer's Market. We have several events. The Police Department is sponsoring two shred-a-thons, so if you've got that pile of tax returns that needs to be shredded, old bills, anything with account numbers on it, you can bring those out to the market in May and October, and it's completely free, you just need to come and drop it off. The biggest event of the year for us is our Park It in the Market Food Truck Rodeo. We have a smaller one in June, June 30, where we'll have about eight trucks. And then the big one in September 29 will be almost 20 trucks, and that's the one that we close Main Street down for. And that's, we had almost 3,000 people last year, so that was a really big attendance. And another event at the Farmer's Market that's gained quite a bit of popularity over the last few years is Sprout Fest Kids Appreciation Day. And that's on September 1, which is Labor Day weekend. And that's on September 1st, which is Labor Day weekend. And it seems like parents really just kind of want to get the kids out of the house that weekend, so that's been really good. Sponsorships are actually still available for all of our events, so if you have a local business and want to get some face time in front of our customers, give me a call. We hope that you'll all come out to visit and support our local farmers and food producers. You can follow us on social media. We're on pretty much all of the channels, and we also have an email list you can sign up for on our website. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Jessica? Or comments?
No.
You've never been there, you ought to go there.
Yeah.
It's a lot of fun.
Yes, May 5th, it's the place to be on Saturday mornings. And I do have a quick little giveaway for the council. This is, it's very handy this year, and we went off of the kitchen gadgets this year a little bit. So this is a measuring tape, and it's got a Post-it note on it and a pen, and it's kind of an all-in-one sort of tool.
Great. What a deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gift wrapped in everything, right? Taking light?
Thank you.
I noticed I even...
You think I was a taker?
Yeah. Sticky fingers. Great job. Agenda item 7B, request communication, soccer field netting. Adam Hoffman, better known as Shorty, and I am better known as Stretch.
Test the flexibility of this microphone here. So tonight, Town Council, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about putting a soccer barrier along the Ting Stadium Soccer Complex. But first, before we start, I want to talk to you about the baseball complex and what we have there currently. Based on Major League Baseball standards, we have a netting system that stretches from the canopy all the way down to the first base dugout end, wraps around the complex and goes to the third base. And again, that's within compliance for Major League. We have signs around the stadium alerting people to be aware of flying objects, not only balls, but also bats that could come out of the stadium during a game. Through the course of time, we've realized that if you have a really good hitter, especially Division One, Division Two caliber, a left-handed hitter with a metal bat, they are sometimes reaching the road of Main Street. So we talked to baseball experts, and they recommended that we put a 20-foot-high netting system, which we came to you last December, got $13,000 from our Parks and Recreation Reserve to install this. And this just got put in about last week. And we have a few punch-throughs items, but basically this netting system stretches 20 feet in the air and comes down to the eight-foot netting, or the fence line that we have here with the hopes of stopping any balls from going out into the road. Likewise, what we'd like to do in the soccer complex, over the course of some games, we do have people, again, if they're a little bit stronger hitter, sometimes loop it over the canopy. More than likely, though, most of the balls hit foul along this third baseline will come over this area here, sometimes hitting the stadium, but sometimes going into the soccer complex. So we're recommending that we draw, this is coming from this point here, a 345-foot-long fence that's 20 feet high, where the net would stretch from the top of the poles and go all the way to the ground so that we could prevent balls, or at least a good number of balls, from going into the complex there and hitting prospective clients. You can see, most people will stand on this side here, along this area. If they were to stand more in this area, I would feel that they would be very in a comfortable zone of not being hit by a ball. Really don't see this frequently. We see it more so when you have, again, maybe a Division One, Division Two team. Most of the teams we have in there are high school showcase teams. Sometimes we have, most of them, like a Division Three, Wake Tech, William Peace, those teams of that caliber. It's really when you have those other teams in the Division One, Division Two ranges that can get over the top here. So what we're recommending is that we install this netting system. It would take about four to six weeks. It's gonna cost about $24,500 to get this installed. Questions or comments?
Questions or comments of Adam?
Which posts in the sites?
What's that?
Which post is it gonna be going off of?
It would start right, it would start right here where this retaining wall goes, and would stretch all the way down to where the fence is down on this line here. There is another fence here, or a gate, that would have to be overstretched, but it would go, again, this whole length here so that it would provide the best barrier.
From that base there, 20 feet up?
20 feet up. So this is a six-foot-high fence. You're talking, it's not gonna be the most aesthetically pleasing thing, but it'll be somewhere in this range here above this bell light. But it'll stretch all the way from the ground, all the way up to there. So the balls could go through the gate that we currently have here. So that's why we want to go all the way from the top to the bottom.
You're gonna recommend the parents stay closer?
I would recommend they stay a little closer. Again, just when we have some of those games that, you know, sometimes we have both going on at the same time, again, on a showcase tournament, I'm not saying it's totally out of the realm that some ball would get there, but again, it's really when you have those bigger Division One, Division Two teams that come in. Salamanders games would be also a time that you would want to do that, but most of those are in the summertime, which is our, kind of a minimal use time for soccer during that time of the season.
Is that something where we could put a policy in place for anyone that is on the field, be closer to the netting there?
I don't know if people are gonna actually do that. I mean, I can tell them it would be safer to stand back. I can't force people to not be on the sideline. Some will want to do that unless you want to do that. I don't see that being an option people will want to do. Some people will take that risk if they feel so inclined to do so.
Is there a sign? We could put, say, warning, we recommend?
Sure. We do have signs here. I have signs all along here. You see the blue signs down? You can't really tell from here, but there are signs that alert people to be aware of flying objects coming from the stadium. But we could, obviously, we could put something out there and say, you know, stand closer to the fence to ensure. I don't want to say ensure, because if there are some looping balls, I would never guarantee 100% that no ball will ever hit someone, but the closer they are to that fence, the less likelihood they would be hit by a ball.
Could you add wording to the agreement when they're renting the fields to say that? Is there a warning already?
We don't have a warning on the license agreement, no, but we can put that out there to their, to Wake Football, who uses that field more so than not. We can use, anybody who uses that, we can put that on some type of writing to stand closer to the net. And we do hope to get more grassy area here. Again, we've tried to grow grass, but we're gonna try a different type here this spring and summer, so hopefully we'll get a little bit more grass and be a little bit nicer for people to stand on as well.
So you said about four to six weeks?
Four to six weeks. Once it's approved tonight, I'll meet with the contractor and...
Twenty-four-five?
What's that?
Twenty-four thousand five?
Twenty-four thousand five hundred. Yes, sir.
Okay. Further comments or questions? Zip to motion.
Motion to adopt amendment to the full year 2017-2018 budget in the amount of $24,500 for soccer field barrier netting.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing that, say, thank you, Adam. Agenda item 8A, and remind everybody, every public hearing tonight is sworn testimony. If anybody is wishing to speak and hasn't signed up in the back, please do so. If not, we're okay. 8A, public hearing, 18 SEU-01, 424 Grigsby Avenue, Sean Ryan.
All right, so this public hearing and the following public hearing are very similar in background information, so I'm gonna give you the long version with this presentation, and then the next agenda item, I'll give you the short version since they're pretty much the same story. But this first special exception use is for one single-family house at 424 Grigsby Avenue, located in the Oak-Grigsby-Elm and Main Street block, just south of Town Hall here. Several years ago, the Town Council changed the ordinances to require that any new single-family residential dwelling unit in the Village District area receive special exception approval due to varying circumstances, including smaller lot sizes that don't meet the zoning requirements. So this evening, this one is for 424 Grigsby. As you can see on the Village District Area Plan, the property is located roughly where the star is on the screen here and is designated as future mixed use. This image on the right-hand side of the screen is a more detailed view of the town's vision for the development of the Village District area. The property is located down at the bottom of this image, again, where the star is at, and basically has a mixed-use designated property. We can talk about mixed use as two types of uses. One is vertical mixed use, so multiple uses contained within an individual building, or we have horizontal mixed use where you have different uses on their own properties, but they all mix together and complement each other. So this would be an example of horizontal mixed use, since it's an individual use on the property. And you can see from the zoning map, as the properties are currently zoned in this block here, it's set up for that horizontal mixed-use type of development with the Town-Village-Zoning District or our commercial downtown zoning fronting Main Street with single-family R-10 residential behind it. And we envision that this block would be a good candidate for an alley to go down the middle so that businesses fronting Main Street wouldn't need additional access points. They could access their properties from the alley, as well as the homes accessing their lots from an alley as well. This is just an aerial view of the neighborhood. You can see that, as currently developed, the area is mostly single-family residential dwellings. This property is at the corner of Elm and Grigsby here. This is the proposed plot plan. The house will face Grigsby Avenue with a front porch. The driveway for the property will actually come off of Elm Avenue to the back of the property. And these are the proposed elevation for the house using hardy plank siding. With that, I will invite our Planning Board member up, Ernie Kerpico, to go through the Planning Board discussion.
Hi, Ernie.
This was discussed with the Planning Board, and you can see it was recommended unanimously. We didn't find too much fault with it. There was some discussion about the backfilling, but we were very comfortable with it in general with both properties, the one you're gonna see that comes next as well. It was really kind of a slam dunk for us on this one.
Questions, Ernie? Comments? Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions to Sean before we go further?
Nope.
I've been there. All right. Motion number one, please.
I'll make the motion, motion to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use petition number 18-SEU-01 to allow a single-family home at 424 Grigsby Ave.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use petition number 18-SEU-01 to allow a single-family home at 424 Grigsby Avenue with conditions listed in agenda packets.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank Sean. Stay there. Agenda item 8B, public hearing, S-818, SEU-02, 410 Grigsby Avenue. Again, Sean.
All right, so this property is just up the street. Here's 424 on the corner, so it's two properties to the north of the previous property at 410 Grigsby Avenue. It is the same request as the previous agenda item to allow one single-family house at 410 Grigsby Avenue. Same situation with the comprehensive plan designated as mixed use, also zoned R-10. Here's the aerial image, just north of the existing structure is 410 Grigsby. This is the proposed plot plan. It's a little bit different. The house is pushed to the side of the lot, but meets all of the town's setback requirements. It does allow for the possible addition of a future garage or carport. And you can see that the applicant will be providing that easement in the back of the property for the future alley. The house is proposed to look substantially similar to 424. And as you heard from Mr. Kerpico, the Planning Board also voted 9-0 on recommending approval of this home as well.
Before we go to the motion, any further comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
This lot is more wooded. Did you talk to the developer at all about if there were any trees they were planning to keep?
I believe that this house came in for review prior to the Town Council discussion about tree preservation, so I can't recall for certain if that conversation was had when the applicant submitted their petition. The applicant is here tonight if you would like to address that with him. Absolutely. Mr. Brown, could you come up?
Have you been sworn in, sir? Sworn in? Have you been sworn in? Have not? Uh, time.
He's been sworn in.
Well, he's been sworn in. Okay, I misunderstood.
I'll go with it.
All right, go for it.
So the question was about tree preservation, is that correct?
It was just that that lot is more wooded. I walked it last weekend just to look at it. Are you gonna just clear the lot, or are you gonna try to keep any trees? I know it's not something we can force you to do, I was just wondering what your plan was.
Yeah, a lot of them are, since you walked the lot, you saw a lot of them are not that tall, so it's a lot of smaller stuff. So we will take the majority of the middle of the lot out. There's one tree in the back-left corner that's sort of a little more substantial than the rest, so that's what we'll probably keep. And if you got to the back, you'll see a lot of it was actually just open anyway. So we will keep some, but there's just not a whole lot that's of any size or anything on the lot sort of currently.
That you're trying is great. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
On 8B and C, we're opening and closing the public comment period, your public hearing comments, and any further questions to Sean?
You meant to say A and B?
A and B. Yeah, thank you. If I said it different, it's A and B. Motion?
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use petition number 18 SEU-02 to allow a single-family home at 410 Grigsby Avenue.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use petition 18-SEU-02 to allow a single-family home at 410 Grigsby Avenue with conditions listed in agenda packets.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean. Agenda item 8C, public hearing against sworn testimony, 18 SEU-03140 West Holly Springs Road, Matt Beard.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so the next special exception use before you is for a couple of tenant spaces at the Village Center shops. The petitioner would like to open a bottle shop slash bar. And I apologize, this is actually a typo here. It's not 104, it's 140 West Holly Springs Road. It is correct on the motion, so. So as a property in the local business district, it is required to get a special exception use granted for the bar use. Called out specifically what the tenant space location will be in that integrated center with some of the current tenants highlighted on the screen. As I stated, the property is within the local business district. It is shown as mixed use on the Village District Area Plan with adjacent residential behind and more mixed use around it. We do have the applicant here with a presentation for you. They have been sworn in, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Hi there. Name and address, please.
I'm Katherine Nicholson. Like I said, I'm Katherine. I'm a native of Raleigh, born and raised there. And Steve is from a small town in between Chicago and Milwaukee, Antioch, Illinois. He moved down here about 12 years ago, so, you know, we'll claim him for now. We moved to Holly Springs in 2015. We've been married for three, almost four years. We're both longtime corporate America professionals. We've been beer nerds for longer than probably we care to admit. We're dog lovers, CrossFitters, general sports fans. If there's a sport out there, we have a team. One of us is a Livingston John fan, and the other is a cancer survivor, which plays into our story while we're here. We've been doing what we're doing in corporate for, you know, over a decade. And we've talked about opening a bottle shop for a few years, and the timing just really wasn't ever right, and a lot of that had to do with Steve had ongoing health problems for...
Multiple.
He is cancer-free. And, you know, after, after we recovered, we just kind of looked at each other and just said, you know, what are we doing? Are we doing what we want, what we're passionate about, what we're, you know, interested in? And it was kind of a wake-up call that maybe now was the right time to try to go for this. So the name is Black Dog Bottle Shop. These are our two black dogs, Bentley and Gypsy. Bentley is on the right in the blue, Gypsy is on the left in the pink. We both grew up with dogs. Every single one of my dogs in my life has been black. So it's a little bit of an homage to them. But there's also a stigma around black dogs that they're scary, or mean, or aggressive, and it causes them to be adopted less in the shelters. So if our name can even, you know, do anything to change somebody's mind about that.
I want to interrupt and say, we have a black dog.
Aren't they great?
So I hear you.
So if we can change somebody's mind just with the name, you know, that would be really wonderful. And we're hoping that once we open, as we are establishing our footing, that we can work with some local animal rescue groups to, you know, further that. For those of you that aren't familiar with a bottle shop, it is part retail for craft beer and part craft beer bar. This means you can purchase beer from locally, across the state, nationally. You can buy it in a full six-pack. You can come in and buy one bottle of beer. You can make your own six-packs, you know, however you feel. The craft beer bar, part of it offers anywhere from about 16 to 20 different craft beer taps. So you can come and sample one beer, you can sample several, or you can have a pint to walk around with while you shop. Excuse me. All these bottle shops that are in existence are places of community. They're places for people to come and gather and hang out, relax, and have fun. And a lot of them are dog-friendly, which is one of the things we're hoping to be. We want to be a place where people can come enjoy our passion and share it with us, where people come to learn about beer, learn what they like, don't like, what they don't know that they might like. And we really want to be our own little community within the community of Holly Springs because we've seen so many good communities pop up in places like bottle shops and just around craft beer itself. It's a really unique community. We'll be kind of a mom-and-pop type shop because we live about 10 minutes from the location, and we'll be the primary operators of it, especially me. I'll be running the day-to-day of it. As I mentioned, we're looking for this to be a dog-friendly establishment for responsible dogs and owners. We've explored all kinds of bottle shops and breweries, the state, nationally, and, like I said, there's just such a unique community, not only just around beer and bottle shops, but if there are dogs there, we've found that people are, tend to be happier, they stay longer, and they're just more connected to the space itself. It is important to us that this not be a place where people come with the intention just to drink. It is important that this is, like I said, a place of community where people are learning what they like, what their taste buds are saying. This isn't someplace that we're going to encourage people to get rowdy either while they are at the store or once they leave. This, we know, is damaging to us, to our reputation, to the community, to the patrons themselves, and, I mean, to the physical inventory and the physical space itself. We'll close well before the 2:00 AM kind of legal standard that North Carolina has for last call. So once again, we won't be encouraging any disruptive behavior, protecting ourselves, the patrons, and surrounding community. Our hours of operation will extend beyond those of the businesses around us, so we won't create any parking headaches. The bar space itself is also going to be less than 500, 500 square feet, which puts us meeting the parking ratio requirements, which for our space is 5.6 spaces per thousand. And, you know, why are we opening in Holly Springs? Holly Springs is the only suburb of Raleigh without a bottle shop. Most have about, at least two, and Raleigh, I mean, at this point, we can't even count. Could be 10, I mean, it was well over 10, probably closer to 20 at this point. So, you know, bottom line with all that is, craft beer isn't just, isn't a trend, it's not, you know, this quick blip on the radar. It's a booming industry. It's here to stay, has made North Carolina a lot of money. We chose this location because it's close to downtown, and we want to be a part of downtown. We want to be a part of all the excitement that's going on right now and the revitalization of it all, and it's, you know, it's very exciting to us. We'll be walking distance to several neighborhoods, both established and ones that are coming up. And we're excited that we would be on the way to and from Ting Stadium for a lot of local residents because we'd really like to be a part of, you know, things like the Salamanders and further encouraging community participation and growth. And we love this town. We really, we do. We love craft beer, and it's a passion of ours, and we'd really like to bring it to this town and share that with the residents. So, quick recap, I think I've said "community" more times than I can count, but we really want to be good for Holly Springs. We're going to be, you know, respectful business owners. We want to be a place where people feel comfortable and welcome to come and build their own relationships and hang out. We're just, you know, regular, hard-working people that decided to go for something that has been a dream of ours. And we love dogs, and we know there's not much as good as hanging out with your friends, hanging out with your rest four-legged friend, and having a good cold craft beer. And that's it.
Questions or comments?
Do you envision any outdoor activities, or is it all contained inside for noise? I'm asking for noise.
Well, we don't, the lease doesn't have any specific access for us to use the outdoor space. However, we've noticed from talking to the other business owners in the unit, they're excited to bring us in because they've talked about maybe having them all come together, all the business owners, and maybe do like a charitable event, like, just as an example, like a St. Paul's event in the parking lot. And of course, we'd get all the necessary permits and whatnot.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We love black dogs.
Yes.
Lucy. Anything else before we open up the public hearing?
Matt, I saw in the application they had indicated being a private club. Is that purely to allow the dogs or any other stipulations or anything that comes with that? Is that something we?
No, it's the ABC laws that require you to have a membership if you're not going to serve a certain amount of food.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything else from Matt? If not, we're going to open up the public hearing. Wendy Harris, you here?
Back.
Name and address, please.
So I'm Wendy Harris. I'm the owner of Crafty Beer Shop in Raleigh. I was the, I believe, the third craft beer bottle shop in Raleigh to open. We've been open almost five years now. So I'm really trying to more or less vouch for Steve and Katherine and their vision as well as who they are as people. I've known them for almost the entire five years we've been open. They are wonderful people, very trustworthy, very hard-working, creative, definitely love dogs, as I'm sure you gathered, and really know their craft beer. They have a leg up on me. When I started Crafty five years ago, I left corporate America also, was with Intel for 14 years, and I didn't know much at all about beer, period. So it was a kind of steep learning curve for me. However, they do know a lot, and I'm also helping them out, giving them some advice, some pointers, so they can avoid some of the mistakes that I learned along the way. But Crafty's very similar. We're dog-friendly. We actually have a dog walk club that we donate to the SPCA. We're definitely a community place, so that's not just words when they say it. People really do enjoy a place that they can go as adults and have a beer, buy some beer, talk to other people, and feel like they're accepted. It's not, you know, a bar-bar where people are looking to go and get drunk. It's not a pickup joint, although I'm sure that happens from time to time, but it's definitely much more about community and talking. We even do potlucks at Crafty, and I think they're going for the exact same kind of feel. So I think it'd be a big benefit to Holly Springs from a community perspective as well from a revenue perspective because, let's face it, the craft beer industry in North Carolina has definitely helped over the last few years. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I would definitely would put my faith in them for sure. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Wayne Pore. Have you been sworn in, sir? Have you been sworn in? Go ahead. Name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and address.
My name is Wayne Pore. I live at 5300 Lake Edge Drive here in Holly Springs. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As many of you know, my wife Erin and I own the Plating and Sports Store at 138 West Holly Springs Road, immediately adjacent to the location that the Black Dog Bottle Shop's going into. And I just want to let you know that we fully support it going in there. We have absolutely no concerns whatsoever. I can't speak for the other owners, but I have spoken to the other folks in the center there, and they're all excited about growing that center, getting it filled, so that we can all prosper together and help grow that downtown community. As you all know, we've struggled for many years to fill that center, and I truly believe that this is a great opportunity and a step in the right direction to turn that center into a vibrant facility that we all envision it to be and become a great part of the downtown area. And I really think that the Black Dog Bottle Shop would be a great fit into the current target demographic that myself and the other businesses are looking for to bring into the center. We know that the more traffic we have, we'll all prosper, and that'll be great. So Penny, any questions you have for me? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Wayne. At this point in time, a closed public hearing. Further questions or comments, Matt?
A thought just occurred to me, do we have to supply a pet litter place with bags? Or I didn't even think about what it would mean to have a pet station. Or is that something they are going to provide?
If it became an issue on the site, we could ask the business owners or the property owner to address the problem. But as far as dogs on-site, we don't have anything preventing dogs from going into the property.
Counselor, any thoughts legally on that? I've never seen it.
I think it's a good, it's a good concern. It's a valid concern, but, I mean, what's before you is a, you know, the special exception used for the bottle shop, and the owners have just said, well, we're going to be encouraging dogs to come in. We don't know what the problem would be, but I think we have the, you know, we do have an MPDS permit that requires you to clean up after, you know, a dog, and, you know, so any property owner would have to clean up pet waste. You know, were you looking at a kennel facility, you know, that would certainly be something that you would want to find as a fact that that would be an issue. I think this is sort of a tangential, sort of a corollary type of situation. I don't think, you know, you really have to find as a fact that they will address the pet waste issue, just because that's not really what they use their looking to do.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
And I can bring Ernie up if you want to discuss the planning board.
Sorry?
I can bring Ernie up if you want to discuss the planning board discussion.
Twice in one night, Ernie.
This was quite a unique presentation, as you can see, very thorough and well-done. And it had a lot of questions. And as you can see from your staff report, I think we covered pretty much everything except the one thing that Ms. Kelly brought up concerning the doggy cleanup or whatever. But otherwise, we were totally satisfied. You can see we voted 9 to 0 to approve it. We talked about hours of service, parking, appability of bringing dogs into the business. Any restrictions on that? And there were none, so we were good to go with it.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thanks. Thanks, Ernie.
Motion?
And I will say, full disclosure, I also have a black dog.
All right. How many out there have black dogs? Raise your hand. All right, we win.
And since it's sworn testimony, I feel I should say, he is a good boy.
Mine is a good girl. All right, motion number one or two.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use petition number 18-seu-03 to allow for a bar at 140 West Holly Springs Road.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use petition number 18-seu-03 to allow for a bar at 140 West Holly Springs Road with conditions listed in agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Welcome aboard, black dogs. Yay! And beer too, but that's, never mind.
Hey now.
Gen 8D, public hearing, 17, this is a little tricky, 17-seu-16, 17dp-16, 17vartc-09, 17vartc-10, 18wav-02, 18wav-03, United Community Bank, finally. Elizabeth Goodman.
Hi, Elizabeth. I am here before you to address one item before you act on the list of requests that the mayor just outlined. As you all are aware, the town has a timbering ordinance that regulates the removal and preservation of trees and shrubs within the perimeter buffer zone prior to development. Back in September of this past year, trees were removed from the property that the United Community Bank is proposing a project on tonight. Prior to action on this request, a determination needs to be made of whether or not there's a violation to the timbering ordinance and what, if any, penalty will apply. To help with a little bit of background information, these are a couple of visuals to show you kind of what the site looked like here at the bottom prior to the trees being removed. The picture at the top is a picture with the trees removed fairly recently. And then the picture here on the lower left is a street view of what has been, what would the trees look like prior to removal. I believe it is just two trees that were within the buffer area, but the area was cleared where the structure was. A part of the town's ordinance, it allows the town council to act and impose a penalty if they choose. I've outlined the two penalties that were in the ordinance. One is to deny building permits and site plan approval for a period of three years after the trees have been removed. A second one, which is not really applicable because there was not an opportunity to plant the trees back within the 120 days, but that three years could be reduced to two years. The council does not have to impose either of these penalties. It is at your discretion.
I had a question for the councilwoman. Is a fine, a small fine, another option we have or not?
Yeah, it's not set forth in the ordinance that you have the authority to impose a fine if you were to, you know, reach a settlement or that type of thing. You know, we won't impose the strict letter of the ordinance if, and you come to some other solution, you know, as long as everybody agrees, that's almost an option.
Yeah, there was another option, just to consider, okay.
Elizabeth, the motion to, you said that's not an option because 120 days are...
Has already passed.
So we can't do two at all?
It's my understanding that it is not available...
Yeah, it's not set forth in the ordinance that you have the authority to impose a fine if you were to, you know, reach a settlement or that type of thing. You know, we won't impose the strict letter of the ordinance if, and you come to some other solution, you know, as long as everybody agrees, that's almost an option.
Yeah, there was another option, just to consider. Okay.
Elizabeth, the motion to you said that's not an option because 120 days are...
Has already passed.
So we can't do two at all?
It's my understanding that it is not available, but I don't know if there's any other interpretation of that.
I mean, I don't know when the trees were cut down. I assume it was more than 120 days ago. I would say that, yeah, that would, you know, it would seem it's either a three-year moratorium or...
Right.
I mean, the ordinance says three, but it says you don't have to enforce it. It's up to the town council to enforce, to waive it or not waive it. So in theory, you could waive it for a lesser period of time. You could say we're...
That was kind of the same kind of question I was asking.
Elizabeth, what has been the response by United Community Bank regarding this? What has been their feedback?
We met with them. The representatives are here, they can speak for themselves, you know, that the violation wasn't intentional, that they instructed the contractor to clear the lot, and that was the, the result was a complete clearing of the lot instead of a clearing of the lot. But I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. I mean, that was the position that they took.
Are they here?
Would you like the representatives to?
Yeah. Sure.
Hello. Name and address as usual, please. Name and address as usual.
My name is Derwood Stevens Smithfield, and I'm the contractor and the developer for this plan. Originally started as Four Oaks Bank, it's now become United Community Bank as of yesterday. As he said, it was not willful intent, malicious intent to avoid or omit a regulation. It was out of pure ignorance, and, you know, I've always told, growing up, by my mom, that haste makes waste, and I think that's exactly what happened to us. About five days after Four Oaks Bank got control of the property, we got a letter from the town that said there was debris piling in someone, and I do not know who that someone was, was putting debris, a lot of debris on the lot, and it got piled up and looked pretty bad. And so I contacted our demo guy and said, "You need to get that lot cleaned up immediately. You need to go get a demo permit and get that lot cleaned up immediately." He did exactly that. He was unaware of a timber ordinance. I was unaware, and I should have, and my apologies, I should have come and double-checked all the ordinances. I was away at the time, and we were eager to get it cleaned up, so we did not do our due diligence on the ordinance. So my deep apologies for it, and it is a tree we can't replace. Now, in his defense, and I'm not throwing him to the wolves either, in his defense, he saw the preliminary plan, and the preliminary plan showed a 12-foot sidewalk all the way across there, which the trees were within that 12-foot sidewalk. So it was his understanding that in order to construct a 12-foot sidewalk across there that the tree would have to go. We also have to relocate the overhead power lines, Duke Power Lines, to underground, and we have some fiber optic that follows that same path. So again, who knows what had happened to the tree if we had dug around the roots with two power lines and fiber optic lines? Obviously, I'm not able to answer that. Don't know. Again, we deeply regret it. It was an error on our part. The bank was anxious to be a part of the downtown development, and they had to make a lot of concessions to fit into that, and they have been willing to make those concessions and spend some extra bucks to make this happen downtown. So they were looking forward to that, and it's unfortunate that we stumbled coming out of the blocks. And I apologize for that, and we'll take whatever punishment we've got to take. But I would say to you that the new owners have not been as excited about moving forward as the previous owners were, and I would say if it was a three-year moratorium, I would say they probably would not do it. Again, I don't speak for them directly, but indirectly. Be happy to answer any questions about a series of events or our fault era.
Questions or comments? No?
Yeah. Mr. Stevens, when you do construction and permits are needed, and you've probably done projects where, you know, you've got to wipe out trees, correct?
That's correct.
Did you know that those trees were there? Did you know that those trees were there?
I did know there was trees there.
You did know, okay.
I did know there was trees there.
And then after, when we sent you a letter that you had been in violation, and that was in September, right?
I don't recall the date.
September? When the trees were cleared?
Yes.
Yeah.
No attempt to come back and put some...
Oh, you know, I came back and I talked to the attorney and the town manager, and at that point in time, we didn't know what our opportunities were. I was not advised that we could plant a new tree.
So you didn't think about doing something like that?
No, to be honest, because we were going to put a 12-foot sidewalk along there. So it was in a path of sidewalk.
Others?
Seeing that. Thanks, sir. Okay. Elizabeth, what other information do we have for a real public hearing?
I don't know that this, does this item need a public hearing?
No.
This item just needs your determination.
Okay without that, sir?
Yeah. I mean, if you wanted to not make your decision as to enforcing the tree preservation ordinance now, let the applicant go through the site plan proposal, and then, you know, I suppose you could do that. But, I mean, in fairness, probably would take a decision now on whether or not you want to enforce the ordinance, maybe come up with a creative solution like plant a really big tree, you know, instead of the one-inch caliper trees that are usually called for, you know, I don't know what the biggest tree you can plant, you know, in it instead.
Elizabeth, I have a question on the previous slide. The requirement is adjacent to roadways, 50 feet from the edge of the roadway for the buffer zone, is that correct?
That is correct.
So approximately...
About as wide as the road is, is probably what that would be.
Okay.
So, but this is roughly 50, probably a little less than 50 feet. But, yeah, somewhere in here.
And only the edges of the road, so on Main Street and on ARP are the ones that should have been preserved according to our ordinance?
The 50-foot is on roadways, and then there's, I believe, a 25 on adjacent properties.
Okay.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the sidewalk dimensions and whatever. Could you help us with that, Kendra?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, please.
In the downtown area, we have a plan to have wider sidewalks through the core. Main Street is an area that we have a 12-foot wide brick sidewalk, decorative sidewalk, very much like what you have in front of Town Hall here. That sidewalk would be required along the frontage of the property, along Main Street, as Mr. Derwood shared. So that is something that would be required of this project with development.
And would that tree be, or those trees that I'm thinking of, would that be inside the sidewalk dimensions?
It appears that it would have been with inside that area.
Okay, just a question of mine.
Would we have made concessions to go around the tree?
There are some opportunities. We, just off this map on the top corner, we have done boardwalk, meandering sidewalks. There are opportunities to do other options when there is something like that in place.
Okay. Anything else for Elizabeth at this point?
No, it's just difficult. You know, we've seen so much clear cutting, whether it's, you know, by accident or not. This was, with the building of our downtown, this was such a, it was just sad to see. It was such a loss.
I agree, Sharon. We have very little that we can do with most of the clear cutting that's going on. This is a chance that we actually have something we can do to change the downtown.
And in our, you know, our goal isn't to punish somebody. It's to, but it's, it's to make sure that people are careful, much more careful going forward, and we won't replace those trees, especially that tree there. But what can we do to...
I mean, I would be interested in entertaining some of those discussions and see if there's other options on the table. You know, is there something else we could do? Do we make a decision now, or can we discuss it and see if they can come back with something else? Their plan indicates they've already included more than our buffer requirements in what they have to replant along ARP and Main. They've added some hollows and stone columns in there, plus the sidewalk that's required and will be decorative, probably more expensive than your typical sidewalk. But I think it's worthwhile to have that discussion and see if there's an alternative arrangement we could come to.
Right. I don't want to just say, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I think what will come here will add something to our downtown, the building, what it will look like. They're, they've committed to a gateway feature according to the packet on, you know, in the corner of Main and ARP. You know, for those reasons, I'd like to think about what alternatives there might be.
You're looking at the site plan is what you're referring to.
Correct.
That I agree with.
Is there something else you'd like to, like them to think about?
Could they plant a bigger tree that would, you know, in 20 years? I mean, you're not going to replace it, right? We lost, in that 50-foot requirement, we lost two really nice trees. We're never going to be able to get that back, but could they plant something that in 20 years might replicate that or help that instead of just your, you know, as the counselor mentioned, a typical crape myrtle or, you know, something like that, river birch or something, something, you know, bigger, better?
Would that be an option?
Sure, we're willing to do whatever comes to accommodate the town. And I guess when you talk about the corner there, there is a...
I haven't come back up.
There's a large tree, large family tree, so you can, I'm thinking, whatever right you can flash.
I would want to know what that proposal is because of the impact before we make the decisions.
Can we see the site plan first and then?
Yeah, I think you can reserve your judgment on enforcing the ordinance while the applicant goes through the special exception use. You may not, there's a special exception use application in their site plan. You may not want to rule on it. You can table a decision.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they come here and say, "Well, we could plant a six-inch caliper, 75-foot tall red oak that will..." You know, maybe they're prepared to do that tonight, maybe they're not. I don't know in their hearing, but maybe that's something you'd want to reserve. If you don't get that information tonight in their public, in their sworn testimony, you can say, "We haven't heard enough. We're going to continue this hearing to the next meeting," you know, giving them sort of the keys to the freedom.
I would like to, I'm not thinking one tree will replace this tree. I'd like to see if there's a plan to do something that shows that they realize any regret and want to do something to try to rebuild. So I am not ready to vote on anything tonight because of that. I'd like to think more.
I agree.
So Counselor, would you recommend we go through the second phase of this tonight?
Table it first.
It, I mean, it's up to you. It's clear you're not going to make a decision tonight. There may be people here that want to speak on the site plan with respect to things other than the tree issue that may want to get on the record and present evidence on the site plan tonight, maybe members of, you know, so I think in fairness to those people that might be here or might not be, that you introduce the topic, allow the applicant to present their evidence on the special exception use and open the public hearing, and then after hearing all that, if you haven't heard enough, then you table it. Or if you've heard enough...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know.
No?
I think that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
We can have Sean come up and do the presentation for the remainder of the item, and if there's further questions, then let me know.
And then we discuss later how or what, we've got requests, whatever, penalty, you call what you want. That's why I brought up the obvious option of, "Is there any other things we can talk about?" Because I wasn't terribly, personally, just mean, a three-year delay kind of ruins that project.
That doesn't fix the problem.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing really...
Enough, okay. Sean, please.
All right. So as Elizabeth explained, the property is at the corner of ARP Street and Main Street. The request is for a special exception use to allow for a new project in the TV Town Village. Specifically, this is a bank use in the Town Village District. So this is the Village District Area Plan core illustration. Here's Main Street running down the middle of the image. ARP Street is at the top. Just zooming in to where this property is located, it's roughly located here. Here's the intersection. As you can see, this property was once the home of the Nathan Burns House. That was a historic structure. The report from Capitol Area Preservation was included in your packet on that house. The house was also demolished with the removal of the trees, but you can see it's proposed on our core area plan. Directly adjacent to that, the core area plan proposed a building with rear parking and access on Main Street. And I think if you look at the site plan that's being proposed, the building and the parking layout look fairly similar to what the town envisioned for the use of this property. So here is the proposed site plan. It would split the existing lot into two lots with the construction occurring on the northern side of the property and the southern side being reserved for future development. The proposal is for a two-story bank building, approximately 4,500 square feet, including two drive-through lanes. Setbacks in this zoning district are a minimum of five feet and a maximum of 15 feet to encourage the building to be close to the street edge and increase the pedestrian friendliness of the Village District. And there is a variance requested for both the drive-through and the setback along ARP Street, which I'll get to on the next slide. But just to quickly go through the proposed parking for this project, 20 parking spaces are required. 19 off-street parking spaces have been provided, with four up to the side of the building, 15 in the rear, and then the remaining one space will come from on-street parking. They're actually providing six on-street parking spaces, so that will be a net gain to our on-street public parking of five additional spaces. So the variances that are requested tonight, 17 VARTC-09, that is a variance to allow an increase in the maximum setback from 15 feet to 26 feet just along ARP Street. The setback is in compliance along Main Street. And then the second variance request is to allow for two drive-through service lanes at the rear of the building located here. So you would access the property from Main Street or from ARP Street, and then the drive-through facilities would be to the rear. And in the Village District, Town Village Zoning District, rather, the town does not allow drive-through service lanes to encourage more pedestrian-friendly uses. We do allow walk-up ATM facilities, just not drive-through. And you'll see that that came up as a discussion from the planning board. As far as the landscape plan goes, the project does meet all the town's landscaping requirements, and it does exceed it in some instances. In addition to the installation of the 12-foot sidewalk, the Village District Area Plan specifies that crape myrtles shall be planted along Main Street, and they have provided those, and that's consistent with what's being done in other stretches of Main Street with the Town Hall Commons Project. And then along ARP Street, red buds, which is another small deciduous tree, is being planted. Again, that's as our Village District Area Plan specifies. Foundation landscaping will be provided along the building. Interior parking lot landscaping is being provided. There is a larger buffer requirement located on this part of the property underneath my mouse on the right-hand side of the screen here. The properties across the street are residential houses, so there's a higher buffer requirement that is needed. It's a Type A-50, which is an open-type buffer, primarily large deciduous trees. However, due to space limitations, you can't really fit all of the large deciduous trees that are needed, so the applicant... large deciduous trees that are needed, so the applicant increased that buffer to a type B semi-opaque buffer, so it has more evergreen, and it'll actually provide a larger, a greater amount of screening from noise and light than the type A would. So that's provided in this location here. These are the proposed building elevations for the project. On the top of the screen here, this is the elevation that would face Main Street. The building is proposed to be of brick and limestone for the building base. You can see that the building base body and cap requirements are being met. This is the left-side elevation that would face Arp Street. You can see the drive-through to the rear of the building, and the other elevations are fairly consistent with the front. There are two waiver requests being made with this project. One is for the minimum and maximum building bay width. So as you can see from the elevation here, I've kind of outlined what the building bays are on this building, and on all four sides, they are a little bit less than our minimum of 20, a little bit greater than our maximum of 50. But you can see the building bay requirement kind of sets up that rhythm of the building and establishes, and then creates movement for the pedestrians. So that's where the request is being made. Similarly, a waiver request not to provide the traditional floor-to-ceiling windows that are typically found in commercial districts. The frontage does have that, but all the other remaining windows on all facades are not floor-to-ceiling. With that, I will invite Rachel up to go through some of the engineering requirements for this project.
Hi, Rachel.
Down here on my level. Good evening.
There you go.
That's a little better. So with this project, there'll be water service provided from North Main Street. There's an existing 16-inch water main here, and they'll provide a, a water stub for this adjacent property as well. The sewer service is provided through an existing eight-inch gravity sewer, sewer line along North Main Street, and will also be provided with, or this adjacent property will have a sewer stub. With transportation, there was not, the traffic impact analysis was not warranted. The project didn't meet the threshold requirements. However, they are widening Arp Street their half across the property frontage, 43-foot back-to-back on 67-foot right-of-way, and this street cross-section includes on-street parking, as Sean mentioned earlier. So the on-street parking runs along here. And then along North Main Street, or I'm sorry, let's go back to Arp Street, they're also installing an eight-foot sidewalk along their property frontage, which is wider than our, our standard five-foot sidewalk, and it's a decorative-type sidewalk also that's part of our VDAP requirement. And then along North Main Street, we have the 12-foot sidewalk across the entire property frontage as well. Environmentally, the project is required to meet the Town of Holly Springs MPDES Phase Two Post-Constructions Stormwater Ordinance, and the project is located in the Neuse River Basin and will be subject to all applicable requirements with that as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? That's good.
I did, I did want to point out that they, the access off of North Main Street will be a shared access. They have a stub here for this property to come in at a, at a later time.
How does, how does staff feel about that access there off of North Main? Is that something, I mean, based on the plan Sean showed from the VDAP, it looks very similar, right? But is that, is that cut there something, you know, from a streetscape perspective, something we're looking to do downtown, or is there a better way to access the sites?
So they do provide two points of access, one off of Arp Street here. It's a two-way through the site, so there are two opportunities to enter and exit the site. And with the, the shared access off of North Main Street, that was supported by staff so that we don't have two drive-cuts, you know, in close proximity to each other to create, you know, any additional challenges there.
Any concerns about the traffic flow in and out of that Main Street access, queuing on North Main?
Elizabeth, are you going to speak today?
Left into the site?
Left into the side.
Here.
That, this is center left turn, the middle lane.
Uh huh.
So folks can stack in that and not obstruct the flow.
The flow.
Right turn would be closer to the side. And it's a joint access. I think we try to minimize the driveway cuts on Main Street as much as possible.
This looked a...
One access.
That's what it looked, yeah. Concerned of egress?
This will be like a shortcut for traffic, going, you know, trying to skirt issues down the road. Is the intent for it not to be through traffic, but just local traffic to those businesses? But will we see more through traffic to avoid queuing or?
Is there an opportunity to look at traffic analysis or something like that? Because downtown, that area, it's not just rush hour. There's queued up traffic pretty regularly.
So when we, when we received their information as far as trip generation and that sort of data about the project, I guess the full study wasn't warranted, so maybe Elizabeth can add to.
The, the scale of this project is one that a traffic study is not really a good tool to be able to tell us much information. To kind of speak to this drive, we know Main Street is a lower-speed road. It's designed as a three-lane cross-section with a center turn lane to allow for turning in different areas. We don't want a drive for every business, so things that creates shared drives to allow multiple businesses to access off of one point, there, there could have been a scenario that might have had all the access coming off of Arp Street. This did not cause us concern to have a drive off of Main Street, being that it was a shared drive. We, we worked pretty strongly with the applicant to not have a drive just for the bank, which was their original request. So a shared drive was something we were okay with. Does that answer the questions?
So that could potentially be a cut through going on, right?
I mean, you see it at a lot of intersections, you know, just...
It, it might help.
Driver behavior, yeah. Well, yeah.
I mean, I travel that street quite a bit, and that actually might help.
Will there be a left turn allowed out of that onto Main Street?
There would, there would not be anything to obstruct it. I think the natural flow of traffic may prevent people from doing it very often during peak times, but there would not be anything, there's not a median in the middle of the road that would prevent it, or channelization to the intersection that would prevent it at this time.
One option maybe, I mean, talking with the applicant, we've seen some creative things used before, planters, like Town Hall used to actually have, that, you know, the cut through right here by Town Hall, they used to have some large planters. We then installed the, the speed table out here by the back door to try to minimize that cut through. We make it speak with them about doing some measures like that to try to minimize the attractiveness to cut through. That's, I mean, some traffic calming measures, that's an idea that we could have added, and if it's approved, deny it would be added in the construction drawings, some of those measures, maybe we keep the project moving forward, but with some of those measures added.
Because if it's a cut through, that means more traffic's put onto Raleigh Street, which can't really handle that volume, like where Raleigh's so narrow, right? If they're cutting through, where else?
This is to Arp Street here, and Raleigh's a little bit further over.
Right.
Just remember, this drive is an entrance to a business, not a street. I mean, it's not going to be as wide, it's not going to feel like you need to be making wide turns into, I mean, it's going to be entrance to a business. It does not prevent people from using it for a cut through if they want to, but they may find that coming up here is just as...
It won't be a street.
No, I know it won't be a street, but when it's all backed up, I mean, that's...
It'll be somewhere.
See them cutting through, going to Earp, and then heading over to Bass Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I do.
Yep.
Other comments?
So can we go back to the trees that they were going to put in front, crape and myrtle? There were three? There were three?
There's a couple more than the thing, there might be five. There's four.
No, around Main Street.
Yeah, so there's four. So there'll be single-stemmed pink crape myrtles. I believe they were specified at two-inch caliper.
Two-inch?
That's a pretty typical planting size.
I don't know that we want to get rid of them completely if it matches the rest of Main Street, but what in addition, maybe?
What can we add?
You know, I'm just throwing ideas out there.
How about one large one, larger than a crape?
How large is that?
Well, bigger than, no, a two-inch caliper.
Is there someplace on the property as a whole that is most conducive to foster a large tree?
I believe this tree right here is a willow oak, as well as this tree here. Both of those are being planted in a much larger area that could probably support larger than a two-inch caliper tree. I would definitely want to have that conversation with their landscaper before I could tell you that that is true. All the other tree locations, you know, this one maybe, maybe, but these, these are smaller, so I'm not sure. Really, if, if you want a tree to survive, you want to plant it at a smaller size. You bring in a larger tree and you reduce the chances that it's going to survive long-term because it, it hasn't grown up in that habitat. So that's just one thing to consider.
Roots coming out from nearby concrete.
Yeah, that's...
Okay?
I wanted to ask about the, the brick and the, the building, because it's, it's quite square, so we're missing the, kind of the village feel of going up and down, right?
Of the, the brick?
So the other one shows the, what do you call that, like the width of?
The width of the building bays?
Yeah.
This one here?
Yes.
So...
What would it be like if it wasn't, you didn't have the waiver?
So we can probably bring the architect up here, but let me talk a little bit about, I guess, the building bay requirement and where that comes from. So this image is directly from the EDO, and the, the town encourages building bays a minimum of 20 feet and a maximum of, a maximum of 50 feet. That requirement really comes from studies in urban design of the most walkable pedestrian-friendly streets, and studies have found that you need approximately a change in building design or a different storefront every 20 feet to be, you know, the most pedestrian-friendly design. And if you think about, you know, walking a street, if you walk 100 feet, if you're building, the entire 100 feet is the same experience. It's not a very exciting walk, but if your experience changes every 25 feet, you've now had, or every 20 feet, you've now had five different experiences in your little walk. And so that makes your street more exciting, makes your street more pedestrian-friendly. So that's where that requirement comes from. With a building of this size, you know, we always talk about how architectural requirements, you can't always apply them evenly to every building because each building is different, their use is different, and their needs are different. The building of this side, of this size, you're, you're going to have either a waiver of the maximum width, because this building is, is wider than 50 feet, or you're going to have a waiver of the minimum building bay, because if you split it in two, it's, it's not going to meet that minimum 20 feet. So somewhere, they're going to need a waiver for a building of this width. The architect can definitely come up and talk about that a little bit more in detail as to their specific request, but that's where that requirement comes from.
Comment?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, just to see what other ones come up.
The applicant come up. Chet, would you like to come up? While Chet is coming up, I'll point out one thing that, I don't have the image on the slide, but it was in your packet. There was some talk about a public art feature. The image was in the plans. It's proposed to go at the corner of Earp and Main, and it was a stylized holly leaf, a metal that would spin in the wind, and that image was included in your packet.
Name an address, please, especially for the first guy.
Chet Van Fossen, used to be related to Bill Gates, but he disowned me when he got rich. 325 Silver Bluff, Holly Springs. I think Sean said everything that I was going to say. I could go back to the floor plan and show you that, that we designed the building from the inside out. We took all of the needs, the offices, the manager, where this goes, where's that go, and that's what the shape of the building is. And as Sean said, we're either going to have a waiver for too little or too much, so we had the waiver for that. For the glass, I don't think that this building needs glass that goes all the way to the floor. I think we defined an entry, glass went all the way to the floor, the rest of them are windows. It serves the building a lot better than to have the storefront go all the way to the ground. My humble opinion.
Thank you, Chet.
My name is Mike Zakardo. I'm with Weatherall Engineering, 1223 Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh. I am here to answer any questions you might have for our variances. I don't know if you want me to sit here and read these to you. I think you've all read them, so I won't bore you.
There might be questions, however.
Just a question about, also about the windows, is more just kind of an aesthetic look, just for this type of building, for this, for just the way you have it set up, just kind of having a window look is more aesthetically, you think?
Trying to get more of the village look out of it, rather than a shopping center look, and I think that's what we've got, is a more village look.
Other questions or comments?
Your one statement, and the finding is a fact, I think the applicant stated that the drive-through is a major integral part of the business model for the bank. Did you comment on the facts of that, and if, you know, is the bank really teetering on success with the necessity of the drive-through?
My understanding is that they need the drive-through. It's a crucial part of their business, and they probably won't go there if they don't get it. Staff work with us considerably. We've, we've did several site plans. At one point, we took the whole, we took the whole property. We probably went through three or four different scenarios of how to, how to position the building. We think the drive-through in the back is kind of hidden in a sense with, with now with the, what we're doing with the hedges along both sides, and the drive-through is kind of out of the public way. It's, you do have to cross the driveway to get up there, but it's, as far as Main Street people walking up and down the street, there's, there's not an issue. We've tried to, tried to put it in the back, but, but it is critical to the bank going there, my understanding.
Isn't that similar to BB and T in town, the drive-through in the back? Because that's where I go.
Okay, I'm not sure, sir.
Chet?
Is there a walk-up ATM?
No.
That's, that's the difference.
I think the, the planning board did discuss that, too.
Drive-through and ATM there.
Yeah, this does not have a walk-up.
There's a...
There's no walk-up ATM.
Right, there's a drive-through ATM, a drive-through ATM.
You can't, so you can be outside, it's a drive, but you can, okay, you can access it from outside.
The right-hand aisle, second aisle, yeah, but not walk up off, off the Main Street.
If you wanted to go get money, you can walk to it, not be in a car and use the machine.
I've done it.
But it would be in one of those drive-through lanes in the back, right?
Excuse me?
That ATM would be in one of the drive-through lanes in the back.
Yes, under the, the rating inside.
It's accessible, but it's, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Use the outside.
It's in the outside lane. And the, the other variances were pushed back a little bit because we're, we're doing the public art on the corner. If we didn't have that, we, we could scooch the building up within 15 feet like we did on Main Street.
Other questions or comments?
I was wondering if the applicant had any comment about the historical preservation of the house. There were some elements that we've recommended to, to be at least saved.
I cannot speak to that.
They want to know if there was anything that was pointed out that needed to be reserved from the other house. They want to know if there was anything that was pointed out that needed to be reserved from the other house.
I don't want to affect my house. We'd like to know.
I'm sorry.
So, hey, you got sworn testimony now?
Yeah. Be careful with this testimony from the field, because there is sworn testimony, you're right. Go ahead.
All I know is there was a report done. I think that's what my client is saying. There was a report done. It's been filed. I don't have a copy of it with me, but I think it's in the packet.
It's in the packet, and the report indicated there were several features of the previous house that were worth saving and maybe repurposing for other preservation projects throughout other areas. I think Councilwoman Kelly's question was, is the applicant doing anything to preserve those things, or have they?
I got you. I understand. I'd have to ask my client. I'd have to get him up here to answer that question. I can't answer that.
Okay, you have to be sworn in.
Would you like me to get him up here?
Sure. He has to be sworn in.
So, you're not right now, you haven't opened the public hearing yet. I guess what you're doing is listing all the things, all the evidence that you'd like to hear during such time that you open the public hearing.
I'm waiting on the queue for the public hearing.
Question is about the historic commission?
Yes.
We did get a report. I assume that's been submitted in fact. It was determined by the authorities that do those inspections, we wanted to, and he looked at materials, and a lot of materials had been added on. In fact, the brick was not originally chinned, for example. What the bank offered to do was if there was any material in there that anybody would like to keep and preserve and use on another building, it was available. And I think the gentleman that did that, he sent out some notice to some people that are in restoration and using old materials, and everybody, the client, thought it was really nothing there.
That's a question?
Okay.
Okay. I guess I did. Thank you again. Anything else before we open the public hearing? Good to go? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Perhaps a technicality, but at this point in time, open public hearing, I have no one signed up, so we will close the public hearing. More discussion? Clicking through. John, please.
All right, I will invite Mr. Carpico back up to go through the planning board discussion for this item.
Hello again.
Thanks, sir. As a planning board, we discussed pretty much all the items that you've all brought up this evening. And we approved all of the waivers, except for the last one was not unanimous. We had one dissenting member. And that was with a concern about the turnoff of Main Street. That particular planning board member thought we could come up with a better alternative, and that he was the only one that dissented on that vote. One of the things we also did discuss quite a bit was having a dedicated walk-up ATM, because we were talking about having a walkable downtown area, and we weren't comfortable with the idea of using a vehicular ATM for a person to walk up and use, concerned about safety of the individual walking up to that type of ATM. So that was something that we pursued and recommended that that would be a part of the package.
Questions or...
Any other questions?
I understand.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean.
And just to reiterate the recommendations, recommendation to approve both waivers, recommendation to approve from the planning board, the special exception use in development plan, that vote was eight-one, with Planning Board Member Crandall, excuse me, not in favor of the driveway access located along Main Street. And then, as Mr. Carpico stated, there was a recommended condition added, that a walk-up ATM be provided. That vote was seven-two, with Ms. Ryback and Mr. Stolaric believing that it wasn't integral to the project to need that.
Comments here?
I like the condition personally, the walk-up ATM. Something maybe get them to consider that. Promote walkability.
It's downtown with all the buses on Main Street there, which would make sense.
I agree. I almost even wish that the bank would have one of the types where you have to get, go inside, so that the door locks behind you. You know what I mean? So you walk in, little vest, the bank's locked. That way you have a little safety in there by yourself, but instead of being right there, someone come up behind you. But I agree, having one. There's no ATM anywhere walking around there, so...
Is that, is a walkable ATM not something that can be added later, or is it?
It would be up to that.
So the zoning district currently states that a walk, or a walk-up ATM is permitted in that zoning district as long as it is flush with the building facade, so built into the facade, not just an ATM machine sitting next to the building. Or it could be inside of the building. Either one of those would be an option. It's the drive-through lanes that they're requesting the variance for. Those are not currently permitted in the Town Village zoning district. But walk-up would be. You know, depending on how the applicant wanted to go about it, if that was something the council wanted to see, if it was interior to the building, I'm not sure if there would be any architectural changes on the outside. I think if it was outside and flush with the building facade, they may need to make some changes, maybe remove a window or something. And that might reduce the glazing, so they might be back with a waiver for glazing.
I agree then with Councilman Berry and others about now or never have the ATM walk up. I mean, it is a walkable area of town, and it'll become more walkable.
In place of the drive-through or in addition to the drive-through?
That's their, that's their call, but I think, I mean, addition to, right? Because they're going to have some level of convenience for customers that don't want to walk, but I guess that's on them.
Is that something that they've considered?
It was, yeah, it was something that I did speak with the applicant after the planning board made that recommendation. They did not indicate that they were going to make changes to their plan, but I would invite them up to give you their reasoning as to why they chose not to make those changes.
All right, have a good.
Somebody from the applicant's team with the ATM, they have questions about the walk-up ATM.
As I said earlier, we started with Four Oaks Bank. We now have a new bank as of yesterday. I in fact met with some of their officers today. I would say to you that initially, Four Oaks Bank was opposed. They think it's a security issue. Now, I don't want to throw anybody to the wolves, but we have talked to some law enforcement people here, and they also agree that an outside ATM machine is a safety hazard. How the new bank feels about an ATM, I can't tell you. And certainly, we can approach them with, but law, the law enforcement report, and let me say, in all honesty, since I'm under oath, I did not speak directly with somebody else. Conveyed that conversation to me, that law enforcement felt like it could be a safety hazard and was probably not best served. But it's up to you. If you want to recommend that to the folk people, I'm certainly happy to bring it to their attention and request. The original bank was opposed to it. This bank, I can't vouch for. I don't know.
Right, and their business model might be different than what Four Oaks is, right? Because you just got acquired.
Hope it's not too different, but anyway. And you're exactly correct. It very well may be, and they may advocate ATMs more than Four Oaks Bank. But I don't have an answer for you tonight, but if that's your recommendation, we can certainly...
I mean, the area there, Mr. Severson is going to be walkable with, you know, several businesses, you know, within, you know, 500 feet going each way.
No question. The question is, are you going to walk it with money? And I think that was Four Oaks' concern, the new people. I can't say what their feeling or sentiment would be. But if it's your recommendation to ask them for that, I don't mind making the request.
It's going to be a different location than anything we have, you know, right now, so I can understand why they are looking at it like that. But it's something definitely worth talking about.
It's a downtown. I mean, it's in the core village district, so it's not like it's a bank down at one of our shopping centers. So it would be great to acknowledge that sort of feel.
And there is nobody here from the bank? New bank as of yesterday? Perhaps you can get back to us on that?
Sure.
Because we're going to be back anyway, I think. All right, thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sean, you're back.
I think we've got to go back to the trees before we can do any of this, right?
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
Well, there's a couple of things that we, you know, the trees as well as...
Well, I think the site plan depends on what we want to do about the trees, right? If we go with a penalty, then the site plan is not getting approved.
Off the table.
Right, right. So I think that's the first thing that has to be answered before we talk about conditions that maybe we should have them look at for their site plan.
And I think we need someone from the bank here to answer these questions, since everything's so new as of yesterday.
It'd be good to see their commitment to the community. I think that's the one thing lacking from the presentation is, you know...
I guess Arkansas says if they provide larger trees, that's something that we would consider and not pose a penalty. Is that what we're looking at?
I don't, I haven't taken a penalty on the tree. I don't know what they're proposing and like, Councilman Berry said, what is the commitment to the community in the town? I'd like to hear that.
They could have demonstrated that by coming to the table tonight and saying, here's what we're going to do, knowing that we, you know, took a couple of trees down, but here's a couple more. I'm not seeing that, which is a little disappointing, but I am willing, personally, you know, to have a conversation with them or entertain the discussion about what might be an alternative solution.
I agree. I agree.
So perhaps we make a motion to table this and let the conversation take place?
Oh, I listen to you, all of you. I think what we're saying is, we want to hear more about the trees, and that will depend on whether or not you invoke a penalty. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then you want to hear about the walk-two ATM machine. Those are two issues on the table that I know of. Is there anything else that they're going to get back to us on?
The road.
The Main Street access.
Yeah, you hear from them on that. I think we have staff's opinion, but...
Well, if you back, do you need an alternative, or is that something staff?
Right. Okay. So that's three things. Am I correct?
Yes.
So we're tabling any kind of a penalty issue at this point, waiting on the three answers to the questions that we just asked. Correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Is that something we can get back May 1st? I don't know. That's the next town meeting.
You have to talk to the client.
What's a reasonable timeframe for coming back to us, do you think, at this point? I know you haven't talked to them. Oh, the tree answer. Trees, ATM.
And the access, Main Street access.
And that's kind of like ours and yours.
Yeah, the staff will have to look at that, too, an alternative to...
Depending on the changes, I'm not sure that... If we're looking at revised plans, I'm not sure staff is going to be able to review those for the May 1st meeting, because we would have to have staff reports prepared for you by the end of this week, essentially. So I don't think May 1st is likely to occur. Possibly the second meeting in May.
Tuesday in May, you think?
I think that's the soonest it could occur.
May 15th.
That would be a final decision date? I think so. My opinion. If I was sitting on the other side of the fence, I'd say that's better than a three-year moratorium. And I think the council's been very open to say, let's keep this going, let's keep it open, and try to help us with those two things, and then we'll work on the, we'll work on the road, right? That's going to be us mostly?
We haven't ruled that out away either.
Yeah, I just...
Sorry?
We haven't ruled anything away in terms of penalties.
No, we have not.
Right, no, no, no.
I think they need to come back and see.
That comes back after this.
Penalties, yeah.
Then we decide that question. Exactly the same question, yeah. So we're really tabling the whole issue until second week in May, perhaps? Does that make sense? Yes?
May 15th, yes.
So we need a motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table the action on this item to the May 15th meeting.
Second?
Motion made, and second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for being patient. Working through it. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay. I knew that would be tricky. Lot of stuff going on there. Agenda item 9A consent agenda, Mayor Protam.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Motion been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing naturally. Agenda item 10A, new business Town Hall Commons 14-030, construction, Aaron Levitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Town Council, good evening. Speaking tonight about a very exciting project for the town of Holly Springs, Town Hall Commons, promises to transform the town, specifically the village district, the core of the village district, into a vision that the town has had for some time now. We've moved from concept to design, and tonight we hope to transition from design to construction. So this evening's presentation is going to start with a little overview. We're going to talk with planning and the vision for the project. We're going to hear a little bit about the economic impact for the town. We're going to see a little rendering video, and then we're going to talk business with construction bid responses and the budget. So just as a quick overview, we are all familiar with this project. But the Town Hall Commons and the block project consists of over 100,000 square feet of retail, commercial, office space, and that's provided by two different buildings. The building located next to Town Hall in this image is the Town Hall Commons building. Also, the developer goes by 242 Main Street, will probably refer to that during tonight's presentation. This U-shaped building is the block project. The town is responsible, as part of the public-private partnership, to construct infrastructure improvements, roads, sidewalks, utility improvements. The town is constructing this parking deck off the back of the 242 building, and some of the additional parking spaces you see on the west side of Avon Ferry here, and on the Avon Ferry Road, and also on the new Rogers Street extension. So first, I'm going to bring up Sean Ryan with our planning department to speak a little bit about how this project started and some of the vision that we've had for this area.
All right, so as Aaron stated, I'm really going to talk about the how and the why, how we got here and why the town has been involved in this project from the very beginning. And really, it starts back with the town adopting the village district area plan back in 2005. In this plan, the town established some broad goals for the development of our downtown village district. There were eight goals that were the framework of this plan, and these are the goals that guided the town as we decided to participate in this project for the benefits that we could see for our downtown area. Of the eight goals, I've highlighted the six of them that we felt this project is really helping to achieve. Defining the core of our village district, it's really about what do we want to see in our downtown, and how do we want that to shape the way that we live our everyday lives? Provide a mixture of uses that bring people downtown and make that unique experience that's going to bring them back over and over again. Provide adequate and efficient parking. That's being done with the on-street parking addition and the parking garage. Create a downtown that's a common gathering place. As I go through some of the images of the buildings that are being proposed with this project, including the town's portion, you'll see that we're really trying to foster that unique, common gathering spot for the residents of Holly Springs. Bike and pedestrian connections through new sidewalks, and visual appeal through common streetscape architecture and public art. So those were really the guiding principles that led the town to participate in this project and create this project from our vision. So how did we achieve those goals? Well, the village district area plan also outlines several of the key activities that the town was encouraged to participate in. Invest in those investments that are both public and private, and that's what this project is. It's a public-private partnership. Consider a catalyst project that will stimulate private investment. And as Anna will outline, we feel that this project does just that. The core area should be the focus of our initial public investments. The town has made several investments in the village district area. However, probably none is as big as this investment that might have the big impact that we feel this will have for the town of Holly Springs. And you'll see with all the projects that were approved, or as you have seen with all the projects that were approved, these design principles were incorporated to ensure that as we're working towards achieving our goals, we create that unique experience that will be successful for the town of Holly Springs. So back in September of 2017, the town council approved the first step of this project, which was the Town Hall Commons master plan. And this really established the guidelines for what our expectations were for the development of this project. As you can see, there's a lot of visuals here that show what we want the public spaces to be, the places that our public is going to interact with the most. The decorative crosswalks, the stone columns, decorative lighting fixtures, decorative street furniture, decorative sidewalks, and street trees. Following the approval of the master plan in October of 2017, the town council approved the development plan for the infrastructure and public parking. That included a new surface parking lot west of Avon Ferry Road, 64 on-street parking spaces along West Ballantyne, Avon Ferry, and Rogers Street, as well as a new parking, tabletop parking deck that will have 107 spaces on the lower level and 100 on the top, bringing new parking in the village district to 329 new spaces. And the proposed tabletop parking deck, as you can see here on the bottom, was really designed to fit in with the fabric of our downtown and not just be an afterthought. So we really tried to put in some thought to the design to make that a pedestrian-friendly building and not just seem like it's a place for cars to go park. Shortly after that, in November, the town council approved the Town Hall Commons 242 South Main Street plan. This was the first mixed-use building approved as part of this project. As you can see the site plan on the screen here, it's approximately 45,000 square foot of mixed use over two stories. And you can see through the image of the building how those design principles came into play with the design of the building and how they reflect the goals of our village district area plan. And the final component of the plan was for the block approved in January of 2018. Again, through the image, you can see how the street becomes activated with these buildings close to the street, these plaza areas, landscaping, and really helping to fulfill the goals of the village district area plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Anna with Economic Development to go through some of the economic impacts that we expect from this project.
Okay, thanks Sean. Hello.
Hey guys. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to talk to you guys about this. As Aaron said, it's a very exciting thing, and we're really excited about what's coming to the downtown. So I'll take you through the steps of the economic impact analysis, kind of what we did and how we got the numbers that we received for the overall impact. So an economic impact analysis is something that, it is an evaluation, and it helps you to evaluate the overall impact of a project on an economy for a specific region. So in this instance, it's going to be Holly Springs. And it's useful to show the impacts on jobs, operating costs, income, and then the distribution of those funds throughout the town. So the steps that we took, we hired a consultant, and we actually worked with a UNC grad student that's been an intern with us for the past two summers. He's really great to work with, and he already had the M-Plan model that we used. So that was something too that we were like, he's familiar with it, he's worked with it, and worked in class and with other students. So for the purpose of this project, I'm going to refer to Town Hall Commons building as 242 Main. They are Town Hall Commons officially, but for, to not confuse it with the overall project, I'll call it 242 Main, and then the block. So this impact had two different parts to it. So we had data, and then we had modeling that we went into. So to get data, we approached the developers with certain set of questions. And then from their inputs and their giveback, we then put that into the modeling software. And we also got internal data from the town and from the engineering department, from Aaron. So we use the M-Plan modeling software, and it's a program that you input, and then it has, it outputs economic development indicators. And the M-Plan model has different input types, and then therefore it creates a multiplier effect, and then brings an output. So this is something that's been used across the state. It's been used for the United States Department of Commerce and then the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And information that's used is, comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Census Bureau, and the economic analysis. And so it's a very trusted model, and that's why we chose to use it. It's been used across the state for the same exact projects like this. So there's different types of impact that the model will explain, and I'll explain later in the presentation. So I wanted to take you through, and at first I was like, what do these impacts mean? And I talked with a consultant, and also kind of did my own research, and so I made little pretty pictures for you guys to help explain. So a direct impact is money that will be spent in town specifically because of the project. So it's money that's coming out specifically because of the project. So an example of this is all of the jobs that are going to be created through this, the wages that these employees earn are a direct impact. So a direct impact includes rents being paid by new businesses, jobs and wages that are coming from these new businesses, expected increase in revenue, and also decrease in cost for other downtown businesses that exist right now. So things such as public parking may increase people wanting to go to My Way Tavern because they don't have to deal with not being able to find a parking spot. So that can also be a direct impact. Sorry, I'm getting used to this. Okay, so then indirect and induced impact are two other ones. For the purpose of this, I won't go into the detail of what's different about them because the distinction is not large enough for the purpose of this presentation. But an indirect impact is money that will be spent in town because of money spent on the project. So an easy way for this, we went through a construction phase analysis and also an operational phase analysis. So once the buildings are built and businesses have moved in. So say that Sally goes into her job at the coworking station and she's getting paid through that, and she lives in Holly Springs, and she decides that she needs new eyeglasses because she can't see what she's doing. So she goes to Dr. Vito's office and buys a new pair of glasses. So that would be her indirect impact, that the money that she's earning from the project is then being spent in and around Holly Springs at our local businesses. Another example would be if a construction worker forgets to bring his lunch and he goes over to My Way for lunch, then that would be an indirect impact. So as I mentioned, we'll go through the construction phase and the operation phase, so just this part will be the construction phase. We asked the different developers how much money they expect to spend on construction, a bit about their tenants and operations, and then revenue once the buildings are complete, and also job growth questions. So I wanted to put this up on the screen to show you exactly what was input into the model. I think the numbers are important for you guys to see, and they're really big numbers and important numbers of what our private investors are putting into this. And that goes along with what Aaron will talk about later with the public investment. So $23.4 million in private investment is combined with 242 and the block. And the $9.3 million is the estimated infrastructure that, construction that the town will put in. And so that's an overall 32.7 million in total spending. And then projected by the developers is 230 construction jobs expected. If you guys have questions throughout, please stop me.
So far, so good.
Okay. And I also want to point out that the 230 construction jobs were only reported by the developers. They are not reported yet for what the town will employ. So with these inputs, then we come to the construction phase impact. So this is the output that the model gave us. So it's a pretty pie chart. The green and the white, as spoken about before, the indirect and induced, we'll just put them as one number and one impact for this. But the total overall is $35.9 million of local economic impact. So this is not to say that this is a direct impact. This is not the town getting $35.9 million, but it's funds that are being distributed throughout our economy. And then also, I want to share that before the developers said that 230 jobs they expected for construction, and the model gave us 206, so it shows how accurate the estimates were by the developers, and also how much the model is matching what they expected. And then the operational phase, so I think this is the fun part to really see once the buildings come alive and people start moving in and our residents start getting to enjoy all their retail and restaurants and the office space. What's going to happen? So the operational inputs is a total of 30 million combined total revenue. And the jobs expected is 500 jobs. To put that into perspective, how many jobs, 500 jobs is, for our business park, if you put Ravesses, The Home Center, Rodney Signs, GMA Supply, Ideal Landscaping, and OFM all in one, that's 500 jobs. So in our two downtown buildings, from two developers, we'll get the same amount of jobs. So input, output, so overall $50 million local impact. That's a very big deal and very exciting for us in economic development. And the model as well said 502 jobs, so it's right there on point.
Are those net new jobs or are those jobs that are existing today?
So there are some that are existing today. We have Rendering House, which is, they're here with us tonight, Stevens back there. They will be expanding, and so will the coworking station. And the Harold Brothers have about four businesses in town that they'll be able to combine into one space. So those are existing jobs, but they will also be able to expand their space, and that was part of why both of them are developing this building. And so they will create new jobs. So maybe this is not, I think the model creates net new jobs, but will also, it doesn't know that we have existing businesses moving in, but they will be able to employ more people now because of the expansion.
The parking that we're building was in the 300s, right?
350.
So where would the extra people park? If there's 500 jobs, where would the extra people park? So we still feel we have enough parking to handle all these jobs?
Okay, so then overall impact. So total ongoing economic impact is $50 million annually. So this is operational impact that's going to happen year after year because these buildings are in operation. The total economic impact realized after year one is upwards of $85 million, and this is construction and operations put together. And then so taking operation, multiplying it by 19, taking the first year out, and then also adding in the construction phase, it's a billion-dollar economic impact within 20 years. Something else besides the numbers, intangibles. We did a survey a couple of years ago with Economic Development Department out to our residents, and a lot of residents, as I'm sure you guys know, asked for local retail and restaurant space. Something exciting about the buildings is that we have mixed-use space, and retail and restaurant will be a component, and so we're being able to fulfill that wish of the residents. As I explained to Dan because of this question, the current downtown businesses will be able to expand. If we did not have this expansion, they would most likely move to another place in Holly Springs, but we couldn't guarantee that because we don't have existing space, and that's what they would need. We have very little existing space, so they very likely could have moved out of Holly Springs without this expansion. New jobs will be created. It is a catalyst project, as Sean mentioned. I think we're all excited. That community character is coming, and it's going to create a community in a walkable space where residents can come and hang out after 5 o'clock. If you all have any questions, I'm open to them.
What was the increase of the ad valorem taxes from these two buildings? So 117, is that what it was?
We found, yeah, it was like 101.
101?
Mm-hmm. It wasn't very large.
Okay.
Well, I mean, 100, it's $100,000 plus a year, and that's just ad valorem, and that does not include the sales tax and also the utility tax. So I mean, it's going to be pretty substantial, very substantial actually. One thing I might add to, to your question, Ms. Kelly, is you were asking about the parking. I don't think we included the parking at the block, the block project. That's also including public parking. I think the parking that we showed only included the parking that the town would provide or has agreed to provide that you're considering tonight, so it's in excess of that 300-plus number, I believe. Okay, with the block.
So the block has 60, yeah.
Okay.
Something else to mention too, as far as taxes, for our commercial tax base will go up because of this, so the diversification in our residential and commercial tax base will be more diversified.
Other questions or comments?
So we were budgeted for 6.3 million, right, roughly?
I think that was it, for us.
For us, but it looks like it's 9 million, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, you're probably right, yeah.
You're correct.
We've got, we've actually got the-
That's what Aaron's going to go into.
Updated numbers, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You were right though, yes.
Aaron's got that, I think. Anything else, Jen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Anna, good presentation.
Good job. Alright, Aaron, you're back.
Alright, thank you Anna, thank you Sean. It's been a real pleasure working with you all over this past year, year and a half. But what does this thing look like? I think that's, you know, we've all seen the bird's eye view, we've seen maybe a rendering, an angle shot. But I think to really get a feel of the scale and what we're really trying to do as far as creating a destination, it's tough to really understand. And that's where, you know, one of the businesses Anna talked about, Rendering House, came to us. They have an interest in this project, and they were able to provide a really nice rendering video. I'm going to try to be pretty quiet during it, but I will just kind of give you a point of view where we are because a lot of it is just unrecognizable from today, how things look today. Start off on Main Street, heading south. Town Hall.
Those are black dogs.
And here's the 242 building. Going to be passing by the new Rogers Road. Coming to the block. Coming north on Main Street and heading down for new Rogers extension, or W. Rogers. This is coming down W. Rogers, approaching the top of the parking deck, which feels very little like a parking deck at all. The elevator tower to the right. This is from Ballantyne Street. Back of the 242 building, again, we're on top of the parking deck. And that shows the entrance to the bottom of the parking deck from Avon Ferry. Traveling north on Avon Ferry, and going underneath the new parking deck. We have full-size spots in the parking deck. And exiting back on the Avon Ferry. Our stormwater device will be right there. Our stormwater device will be right there. I think this is a great angle showing you the kind of efforts we went to to make this parking deck feel more like a downtown building and not just a place to put your car. Finishing up with the majority of the project. Avon Ferry Road. So, you know, our goal being to create a destination, you know, create the cornerstone of Holly Springs downtown. And I think what we've done here is we've accomplished that. But now I got to get to the tough news, costs. You know, this whole project is really possible because the economy today is great. It's hot, construction is bumping, we're very busy. But that's where it cuts, you know, it's a double-edged blade. Because this opportunity is available, and we also have to deal with the ramifications and the problems that come along with that, and that's high construction costs. So currently, as far as the budget goes, the parking deck has come in. The two-four-two contractor bid that, and it came in on their budget. And the last budget that we saw was completed at about sixty-five percent design plans. We had an estimated cost for the infrastructure project of about one-point-nine million. Since then, the project has evolved, the scope has expanded. Not only do we want to provide infrastructure for these two buildings, we want to provide infrastructure for, you know, the future developments. Rex is coming down the street, an eight-story hospital is likely. So extending utility lines not to Ballantyne or West Rogers, but going all the way down to Elm. Removing asbestos cement water lines that are old and aged and brittle, replacing those with large twelve-inch ductile iron water lines is what we did. These also help provide adequate fire flow for the buildings that we are expecting. So when we bid this infrastructure project, we've gone from sixty-five percent to one-hundred percent plans. And at that time, the project was estimated to cost two-point-eight million dollars. We bid the project, and on the first bid, no one bid the project. Contractors, as I said, are extremely busy. And, you know, when you put yourself from, in the perspective of a contractor, you start to understand, you know, I called everybody that came to our pre-construction or pre-bid meeting, and there was eight contractors, and I talked to them, and the common denominator is, you know, these contractors may have four or five projects a week that they could possibly bid. They're really extending themselves, exposing themselves when they bid a project. They invest time to estimate it, they put out real money to secure bonds. And if they do bid one or two projects, and they get one or two projects, then they actually have to go out there and build those two projects. You know, our project, the first time around, didn't have anyone. So when we went back and we re-advertised, we gave the contractors a little extra time. And we opened bids on March twenty-third, and we anticipated a two-point-eight million dollar cost, and the low bid came in at four-point-one. We did receive two bids that day. We had a four-point-one million dollar bid and a four-point-four million dollar bid. So why, you know, why, why did this come in so high? You know, this isn't a unique problem. We've talked to many municipalities around the area, they're having similar issues. They're lucky, they consider themselves lucky to get a bid. We heard from Chapel Hill recently, bid a project, they had three high bids the first time. They rebid it, they got one bid on the second time, and it was twice the cost of the first bid. But from the contractor's point of view, this project isn't as attractive as maybe building a subdivision where your owner or your client has an open-ended schedule, they're willing to work with you. We have liquidated damages, this project has to be completed in a certain amount of time. Besides that, it's not virgin land. We're dealing with an existing downtown. Contractors have to maintain traffic around the site, there are utilities to deal with. Insurance costs were something that we didn't, I didn't think about. To maintain access to some of the homeowners that are only accessed through the construction site, the insurance premiums were really high, causing some contractors to not even bid. And then on top of that, dry utility relocations. You know, we're building new infrastructure, we're trying to build a strong backbone for Holly Springs. There's a lot of fiber, phone, communication lines, cable, two power lines that we have to negotiate. The contractor that gets this project is going to be responsible for coordinating those relocations amongst five different utility companies. These companies, you know, they kind of do work when they can. They're not really too concerned with maybe your schedule. So these are some of the things that caused the increased cost. So as far as the budget goes, you know, we did originally anticipate a total cost, a total project cost of six-point, six-point-six million dollars. And now we're at nine-point-three million for the project. We have come up with a funding plan so that we were able to construct this project. We should all be aware of a project called the MEMS Stormwater Device. This is a project located at the corner of Harp Street and Avon Ferry. It was a stormwater management, regional stormwater device that was going to treat about twenty-five acres of downtown. It was also supposed to spark downtown development by allowing developers nearby to not have to take up a lot of their property with stormwater management. The backup plan has always been, you know, if these do, these projects come in and they're both high, you know, we would have to just not do one. So I think what we're looking at doing is putting the MEMS Stormwater Project on hold. We have bid that project twice, received no bids. You know, that's another difficult project. There's a lot of challenges with it, again, liquidated damages. So, and what we want to do is take some of the funding that we were allocating for that project and transfer it over to this project. So what I have for you right here is our anticipated project cost. We've upped the contributions from water reserves. You know, we had a lot of the increase in cost was due to extending the water lines to serve other projects. Sewer reserves funding went up, stormwater reserves funding increased. And then we also increased the money coming in from street reserves. You know, speaking of street reserves, one of the concerns was how do we justify using that money here on this project? You know, when transportation is something we're concerned about. And this is a heat map we've seen before, and it shows where we've spent money on transportation projects. And, you know, downtown, we've got a lot of work here on Avon Ferry, the Main Street Extension Project, the widening projects. That work kind of bleeds over as far as the shading into the downtown. But really, there haven't been a whole lot of downtown projects recently to use street money. So I think we feel that is justifiable. So I'm going to open it up for some discussion or questions.
Questions or comments, Aaron?
Aaron, you might want to add the sewer upgrade, oversizing the water, the water improvements, like the overall improvements to downtown outside of the two projects.
Sure, I spoke about, you know, building a backbone for other developments. And we've extended the sewer lines along Avon Ferry and the water lines along Avon Ferry to serve the Rex Hospital project. We plan to approach them with a developer's agreement to recoup some of those costs. It's not, you know, a lot of money, I'm probably talking less than a hundred thousand dollars or around there. But included with that work is repaving Avon Ferry from Elm Street up all the way to Ballantyne. Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you. Part of that was, there's a water line that runs that length right now, it's made of asbestos cement. This is a water line that was popular middle of last century. It is, it's relatively, it's safe. What the problem is, is when you try to work on it, it's very fragile, it's susceptible to breaks, especially when there's construction around it. And once it does break, it's hard to fix. So replacing that line, that's kind of been an initiative the town has taken on for the last decade since I've been here, replacing those lines as we can. We have the opportunity with this project to really remove a large portion of that from downtown.
Is that newer since, is that part new since the six-point-six bid?
Yes.
And why are we adding that now?
It was just decided that now was the time we're going to be ripping it, the road was going to get excavated. And when a road gets excavated, you can work on it more easily. If we were just going to replace the water line, we would probably have had to saw-cut the road, so on us to go out there with actually diamond-tip blade and cut a trench in for that utility and have it removed or lay a new utility. By doing both utilities at the same time, we save that sort of detailed work. The contractor can go out there and kind of break away the asphalt with an excavator, which is a lot less labor-intensive. So it was a good, a good time to take advantage of a construction situation that would let us replace some utilities at a lower cost than typically would cost.
What was the item that we underestimated, was it the water and sewer?
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of everything. Costs in general have really gone up. Labor, it's amazing, unskilled labor is one of the biggest things I've had contractors tell me that has gone up. And then looking through the line items that we got, you know, water line was about what you would anticipate. The paving wasn't too bad. It was things like, some of the more decorative elements were a little bit higher. We have some value engineering to discuss. I think maybe there's about two-hundred thousand dollars of cost savings we could discuss after we talk about motions and improving the budget. But, you know, steel has really gone up recently, some tariffs. If you hear reinforced concrete, it's kind of steel in it. So manholes that we would typically expect to be five thousand dollars are coming in at nine and ten thousand dollars. And just, everything across the board was high. You know, and what we did, we employed a third-party cost estimating firm. And if you look at what they did on the parking deck, they were really right on. And I think that what it shows you is, you know, once you get out of the ground with a parking deck, your challenges are pretty much known, you're building on something you've built, you're just going vertical. You don't have to worry about maintaining access or increased insurance costs. When you're dealing with a civil project like this, where it's just really spread out over a lot of different areas and you've got homeowners to deal with, that, those are the sort of intangibles that we couldn't account for.
Okay. In delaying MEMS, what impact do you foresee that having on development in the northern part of downtown?
Well, here, there's a few options with the MEMS project. So currently, the design is really strong amenity, there's a walking trail around it, there's fourteen-foot segmented retaining walls holding it up. As far as development goes, you know, what the developer that would drain to that project would need would be more of a standard BMP or a SCM as they call them now. So in the future, there would be a few opportunities. Either we could use some Parks and Rec funds to, you know, replenish these funds that we've lost because we have a walking trail and it really is part of a park. Or there's the option that maybe we just build a simpler, scaled-down SCM structure. As far as the developer, I think they've planned, you know, once the developer of one of the main projects that drains to the MEMS project is also the two-four-two developer. So they've got some time, they've talked about kind of holding off a little bit, maybe until they get, I forget what the percentage was, but a certain percent rented out of the building. And then they would move on to talking to us about that project.
Other questions, comments?
What projects are impacted, just the MEMS or other, because that's a lot of money out of our different reserves?
It's really just, just the MEMS project that we're going to slow down. And then the reserve accounts, we're drawing some more money from those.
Does that impact any balance requirements of those reserve accounts? Or any emergency issues that might?
It doesn't, it does not, no, sir.
Good question. What else?
Well, I mean, we, we did want to value-engineer the project. You know, as far as the bids coming high, that was, that was a letdown for staff, I can tell you that much. So I have some options I'd like to speak to you after we go through the motions. We have about a hundred and fifty to two-hundred thousand dollars of, you know, reductions we can make on the project, mostly towards decorative items. You know, so there's that. I don't know if you'll necessarily be interested in going with them, but I can go more into depth now if you'd like, or we could wait for after. Because what I would hope to get is some direction from council, and I could come back at a future meeting with a change order, reducing the project scope, if that's the path council wants us to take.
Makes sense? I think. Okay.
This is a big increase.
It is.
Well, we've never done a project like this before.
That's for sure.
So, I mean, those additional costs, especially lately, as you stated before, it's getting more and more expensive to build. So. Okay.
We're fortunate that our fiscal planning gives us the ability to cover these costs this time. We're not going to be so lucky next time. I don't think, I mean, maybe I'm saying that the wrong way. We're in a very fortunate position with the reserve funds that we have to be able to cover this, but this, this is, make no way about it, a significant hit on our reserves, right? So another project of this significance, we may, we may have to wait.
But the return on our investment with all the new jobs.
Is strong.
Tax revenue that we're going to get, you know, is a win-win, so. Yeah, I hate that we're going up to, you know, nine million dollars, but. Well, again, just like Councilman Barry said, that we have the reserves there to pay for this large project, so, okay.
Does that give us enough rainy day funds in our reserves for things that we don't anticipate, like sewage pump?
It does, I think we're all disappointed. We expected the bids to come in higher. I don't think anyone predicted that they were going to come in this much higher. The good news is that we can, we can cover this without financing a dime of it. Those reserve funds are largely funded by development. So we're taking money out of those reserve funds. The Water Sewer Fund, those two funds, they're not impacted as, as much, relatively speaking. The Street Reserve Fund is the one that is being the most impacted. But when you look. But when you look at the needs that we have across town for transportation improvements, I think that really speaks to why we're really looking, and we've been directed to go forward with the transportation bond, because our street reserves are nowhere close to sufficient to cover the needs that we have. Those street reserves are generally in place for smaller type projects, you know, sidewalk projects, you know, some of the infrastructure projects that don't require financing. South Main Street Extension, for example, we did have to finance that through the lobs, you know, in part because the street reserves were just not sufficient. And those street reserves were initially, for the most part, those have been funded in years past by developer funds, also covered in part by some of the town's general funds. So they will be impacted.
You don't foresee any tax increase with this?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Not associated with this project. Transportation bond is totally separate.
That's a totally separate, right. But in terms of all of our water sewage, et cetera, we're not seeing an increase.
These are existing funds.
Yeah, they're existing funds. It'd have to be something catastrophic, I think.
How does not doing MEMs directly impact, or how does that directly help cover the deficit that we're having here?
Well, we had earmarked money a couple of years ago for the MEMS project. And the fallback position, as has been discussed, was that if this particular project, which was our priority project, came in and we needed additional funds, that it would come from the MEMS project. Because the MEMS project doesn't have the strategic significance that it did a couple of years ago when we were talking about the downtown park amenity. We still want to do that. And I still feel like in the future, as development occurs in that basin and a stormwater amenity needs to be put in, or a BMP, it would be put in. And my suggestion would be, it would be put in just the stormwater feature with the, but it should be designed so that, so the park amenity could eventually be put into place, as the town could afford it.
So was MEMs to be funded by the reserve accounts and hence?
Yes.
We could use that money?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we were going to take money from a variety, really the same reserve accounts. It was a combination of Powellville, street reserves, water sewer, and I think even some Parks and.
Basically, had MEMs been bitted out, it would have utilized those funds. Town Hall Commons, had it come in within budget, would not have had to use it. We'd still be in the same position.
We didn't have all the money for MEMs yet.
Well, we would have never, we bid both projects. And if they would have come in within bid, we could be looking today at doing both projects and we could afford to do both projects. But the thought always was, this is our priority. This is the one that's most important and we're committed to doing. We would be recommending tonight, or we would not be taking, bringing the MEMS bids to you had we got them.
The money has always been earmarked for one, the other, both. It just happens to be.
That's correct. That is correct.
So, can you clarify? There are street reserves that we're using that, we have many projects that we need in town that aren't going to be funded by developers. So this will delay some of those other type projects.
Like next on the agenda.
For sidewalks or?
No.
That's all set. That's still, okay.
Yeah. No, it will not. So that's.
We're not, we're not going to, some of the street needs that we have, or sidewalk needs that we know we have to do.
Right.
Is not impacted by this.
Correct.
It's not much.
Just losing the MEMs, we're not going to have a MEMS project. We took the funds from that.
Right.
Right now.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Build it back over time.
Get off the table.
We just have more time to plan it.
Right.
I mean, we've been unsuccessful up to this point getting that MEMS project bid, but the economic environment will change. The bidding environment will improve as we, you know, as the economy goes through cycles. In a couple of years, it may make, it may be a much more favorable project than it is right now. But with so many projects ongoing, and I think as Erin has shared, the contractors have multiple projects that they can bid on. And the MEMS projects, not a particularly large project from their perspective, based on what some of these contractors are bidding on. There's so many unknowns that they've just chosen on two occasions just not to bid.
And that was the project we were moving, the farmer's market? Was there an economic impact to that as well, that project?
That not really, didn't really include the farmer's market. No, no.
Okay. Others?
You talked about the SCM feature. I was just a little confused. So the projects that are being built, is there an existing SCM that will accommodate them? Or when they are built, MEMs would have accounted for some of that? So we are still going to have a need for an additional SCM somewhere else?
Yes, some of the projects, maybe they're, they don't cross the threshold to need stormwater control or management. The, I think it's called Park View. The future project is of a size that would require an SCM. So at that point, you know, the MEMS site could handle something like that, a modified version of the MEMS pond.
The bids that you have before you tonight do include an SCM?
Yes.
For the Town Hall Commons?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's an SCM that handles all of this project. Yes.
There wouldn't be an additional need?
No, sir. No.
Are there questions or comments?
So you had mentioned the hospital. So we're putting in infrastructure needs for the hospital, but it's all around the Town Hall Commons project. I guess that's what's hard for me, to wrap my head that we've just added a whole bunch to something that's, we're doing more than just the Town Hall Commons project.
Sure.
Is that right?
Yeah, we are, we are building the infrastructure of downtown. Now, the, where the Rex Hospital is, the sewage actually drains down Avon Ferry right by this project. And so in order to accommodate their flow from that eight-story building, we had to relay the line at a steeper grade to increase the capacity of that line. So, yeah, while it is in front, if the hospital came in and this project didn't exist, they would have to relay the lines, you know, they have to sewer study, and then there's a likelihood they would need to build new sewer lines all the way to ARP Street.
So, because we haven't approved the hospital yet, so.
Right.
So if, should they be paid for some of it then?
We are.
When that plan comes before you, you'll see a condition on that plan. The things that have to be in order for the added costs. Okay. So will we coop some of that? Will we coop some of the extra?
A little bit.
2.7.
Later point.
It's not only doing it at the same time, like since we've got the road open and putting the utilities for efficiency, but it's, the travel in public is going to be impacted by this project. And then as soon as we are finished with our project, then, you know, months later, then Rex will have to dig the road back up again. An AC water line breaks a year from now, we have to dig the road up again. And so our downtown area would just continuously get impacted. So we wanted to, at the time where we already have it all open, go ahead and try to do as much as we could and minimize it later on our residence. So that was.
Okay. We have a motion here, eight of eight. I'm assuming that we're skipping the first seven because.
I apologize. Yeah, this is kind of the umbrella motion. This is the project budget. All the motions that follow fall within the budget, so.
Just going to rip the band-aid off.
This is what you need.
This is the one we need. And I apologize to Joni, I kind of messed up her slides.
It's okay.
Hope she forgives me.
It's not Joni's fault. Anyway, let's hit the motion troops.
Motion to approve project budget for the Town Hall Commons project.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Big job.
Did hurt a little.
Lot of work. Keep at it. Yay team.
So we got seven more.
All that's.
All right.
All right.
Motion to award contractor Fred Smith Company an approved funding for the construction of the infrastructure project in the amount of $4,164,000.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously number two, I think. There you are.
Motion to approve funding for the remainder of the parking deck project. The difference, the difference between $3,454,533 and $340,000 previously awarded for the retaining wall in the amount of $3,114,533.59 to be deposited into escrow.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously number three. This might be a record number of motions.
It's a big one.
No, that's right, you got the record. Go ahead.
Motion to award contract to SMME an approved funding for materials and testing services in the amount of $126,000.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously number four.
Motion to award contract to CLH Design an approved funding for construction administration services in the amount of $72,500.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously, thank you, five.
Motion to award contract to the city of Wilson, the fiber contractor, an approved funding in the amount of $64,186 for TOHS fiber relocation.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously number six.
Motion to award contract to CenturyLink an approved funding in the amount of $32,463.47 for communications relocation Avon Ferry Road.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously number seven.
Motion to award contract to CenturyLink an approved funding in the amount of $93,073.1 for communications relocation on Main Street.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously, including the one cent.
All right.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
But you're still, I think you're still up, are you not?
I am. You can get rid of me.
But you and I am 10B, new business, Avon Ferry Road, right turn lane. Erin again.
Okay, we're going to shift over to the west side of town, down the Avon Ferry corridor. We have four projects that we're interested in tonight. That's the E45 Elementary School, located off Honeycutt, Honeycutt Farms subdivision, the Bridgeberry subdivision, and the Lockridge subdivision. Specifically, we're talking about a turn lane on Avon Ferry Road. So if you're traveling eastbound on Avon Ferry, heading into Town Hall, and you want to make a right down Cass Halt, that's what we're talking about. So amongst those four projects, the public school project is required to construct a right turn lane here, as shown in yellow. And that's a 250-foot-long storage right turn lane. And then an accumulation from the other three projects caused that right turn lane to need to be extended in order to serve the increase in traffic. So here we have Lockridge, Bridgeberry, and Honeycutt Farms, plus background traffic, so out-of-town traffic, just general growth. So the Wake County School is constructing this, and we saw an opportunity to, rather than get another contractor just to extend the turn lane, to work with Wake County Public Schools and have them have their contractor construct it for us. There's cost savings in doing something like this. You save mobilization costs. And the cost to the town is $64,500. And that is outside of the contributions we expect to get from those three neighborhoods. So the total cost for the entire turn lane would be about $134,520. Of that, the town would be paying $64,500. This includes some design work, permitting, and then the town's portion of the traffic increase. And I think, Ms. Lee, you mentioned, you know, would this be paid from street reserves? And I think Kendrick was talking about the Holly Springs Road project, but this will be funded from street reserves, so just to clarify that point. So we would be entering into an agreement with Wake County Public Schools. We have a bid from their contractor to extend the turn lane work, and that's what we're asking for approval tonight. The construction's expected to start in May. We are working with the property owners to acquire the easements. So this is all pending getting that easement from them. If, if the property owners, you know, wanted to build a project on these lots, they would have to construct the turn lane themselves. So we anticipate we would be able to work with them to get those easements. Any questions on that one?
Questions or comments?
You cited the town's impact on.
Background traffic. So.
That accounts for more than half of the increase?
Yes.
The background, we had, like when we looked at it, Union Ridge, which is the mills of Avon Ferry, they paid $200,000 to improvements on Avon Ferry.
Just a general fee and loo for any?
Avon Ferry Road in general, 200. Stone Mart didn't pay or have anything into this because that was approved so long ago. Sheets had like a 4% impact at this intersection, so they weren't required to do anything. But they're widening across their frontage and doing improvements that's making our Avon Ferry Road widening project less, the one that's the get-ready-to-advertised. So it was, some of those impacts, but it's kind of water under the bridge for those. And then just overall background is what that difference was, the delta that we're covering.
But essentially, we're, we're still in the green because of the Union Ridge contribution.
Yes. Because they did a developer agreement, it was about a year ago, we had a developer agreement where they offered to pay $200,000 fee and loo for road widening.
Has that, has any of that been appropriated to anything else on Avon Ferry Road at this point, or is it still?
No, that was just to be, to go into.
So Kendrick, on that corner lot there, in the future, when it potentially could be developed, we can still collect money for road improvements, or no?
Right. So this is the right turn lane. They'll have to maybe add a little bit of asphalt, curb and gutter, sidewalk. They'll have to fully improve across their frontage. We're just doing a turn lane.
Okay. No sidewalk, no curb?
No sidewalk or anything. It's just getting that right turn lane in for shoulder.
Does that involve any?
You can't go back and charge them. You can't assess for right.
It'd have to be the next guy.
Because we're adding asphalt out there, when they came in, we couldn't say, hey, last year we just, you know, put 60 grand into it. We want a percentage back from you because for us to assess for road improvement, 50% of the property owners have to agree to where we spend it. Like there's ordinances for assessments and general statutes that speak to that, so.
Okay. Does that include any signal modifications there? Any syncing of lights or anything else like that?
Right turn.
There's a right turn.
Yeah, there's a grand.
Arrow now.
I don't.
Yeah. The school was doing signal modification, and then we're just lengthening it to the right.
Yeah, and the modification, I don't think is too much from what they said for the right turn, because of the way, I forget how they said it in the morning. The car's turning left, stop. And it's usually, it's when the cars, they've just dropped the kids off at school, are coming out turning left, that we'll be able to turn right. Because usually what happens now, people going straight, not turning right onto Cass Halt to go to the school, block traffic. Now, when I had my Suburban, I made my own turn lane. But my Honda Pilot can't do that as well, so.
There's signal applications where DOT actually requires things, or any complaints. So they have an appropriate signal modification.
Yeah.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Hit it.
Motion to award contract to Wake County Public School System for lengthening the right turn lane from Avon Ferry Road to Cass Halt Road in budget amendment in the amount of $64,500.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passing unanimously, thank you. And there's one more. Not two? Not two? Okay. Let them true.
Ten C, ten D.
Never mind. Item ten C, new business, Holly Springs Road widening survey, town of Holly Springs, number eighteen dash oh-oh-one, Mary DePina. Hi, Mayor.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Talk to it.
So, we have gotten this award from the local area projects program to widen Holly Springs Road from Main Street to Flint Point Lane. Um, this is a D O T-funded project with comes, which comes with some stringent milestones. Um, the milestone most important to meet right now is a September thirty, two thousand nineteen, having construction authorization. Now, that doesn't mean that we'll be constructing at that time, but it means that we'll have the authorization, we'll have the right-of-way acquired and everything done. So to expedite this process, we're still in the process of, um, of, um, hiring the engineer to do the work, to do the design work. Um, so in order to kinda jumpstart this, we are asking for funds to, uh, hire a surveyor to come out here and survey the properties, not only land surveyors, but also to start to get the environmental documents, so, um, as I think you're aware, that we've already sent out notices to the adjacent property owners notifying them that they could expect to see some people in their yards. So it's just to give them at least a thirty-day notice, you know, knowing we were coming here tonight. Um, so, we're wanting to hire Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy for the survey, um, and we're approving, you know, asking for funding for that as well, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Questions? We knew this was coming, of course. Comments?
No.
Go.
Motion to retain Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy for topographic survey and approve thirty-five thousand in funding, including contingency.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously, thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Item ten D, new business, northeast gateway sign final design, Sean Ryan again.
All right. If you recall back in, I believe it was February, uh, we presented you with the contract to move forward with the installation of the northeast gateway signs. Uh, this is the design that was proposed by our consultant, uh, that we presented to you in February. Um, at the request of the council, we've worked with, uh, the consultant that we've, uh, entered into contract, Rodney Sign Company, to come up with a revised design to reflect some of the comments that we received from the council, uh, back in February. Uh, and this is the design that we are proposing. Uh, the major change is the change in the, uh, design of the gate, so incorporating, uh, both the water and the leaf element of the town's logo to create, uh, kind of an abstract pattern, uh, for that gate feature. Uh, the column will be about, uh, eight feet tall, uh, the gate about eight feet wide. Uh, the background of the gate will be green. Uh, we are anticipating that the, uh, sign will glow from the interior. Uh, we are waiting on the final costs from Rodney's Sign Company, uh, and the engineering documents from them, uh, but we did wanna get kinda this design in front of you, uh, for final approval, so we can move forward, uh, with that. So this is the primary gateway feature sign, uh, this would be the secondary gateway feature sign, uh, so going back to what it originally looked like with that kinda tree look, and then this is what it would look like incorporating the same town logo, uh, abstract design. Um, for this secondary gateway sign, we actually have two options for the council to consider, uh, whether or not you prefer the back of the sign to be black or to be blue. Is there any preference from the council?
You want an answer?
Yes, please.
Do you like black or blue?
I have one blue so far.
How many blues do we have?
Who knows?
I mean, to me, it doesn't matter, just whatever would, will withstand, won't fade, won't do anything, you know?
They'll, they'll both perform the same.
Black?
I don't know.
I don't know if anybody cares. Hello?
I could go either way.
Yeah.
Blue would just be a little bit more visible, and...
Yeah, I'm good with the blue.
Yeah.
Yeah, blue would be more visible.
Black's kinda blah.
And you have, but you have the black below it, so, yeah, it incorporates the sign color.
All right. The main colors is about water.
Right.
It's blue.
Sounds like blue.
We're hearing blue.
All right, we're going with blue.
Yep.
Go, we're hearing blue.
I do have a question. What happened to the welcome to? The two is dropped.
Yes, so I'm, I'm getting to that real quick here. All right, so, in meeting with, uh, our consultant, they had, um, some more surveying done and some more utility locates done. Um, originally, when I came to you, the primary gateway sign was intended to go on this corner where the subway is and on this corner where the Dollar Tree is. Uh, the town has easements on all four corners, um, but the north corner and the south corner are both very flat, whereas the east and west corners are very, uh, sloped, and they have a lot of utilities in them because of the stoplight, particularly on this corner in front of the subway. Uh, so, uh, the recommendation of our consultant is to not put that large sign on this property because it will not fit and look right. Um, so what we are going to be doing is changing the location to the C V S corner and the Dollar Tree corner, so they'll actually face each other, and then we would do the secondary accents, which are gonna be much smaller, uh, on the opposing corners. Um, seeing that, once you are at this intersection, or you're approaching this intersection, you've already been in Holly Springs for quite some time. The entrance to Holly Springs is technically way back here at Killair Farm Road, along Sunset Lake Road, it's way back up at Stevens Road, Sunset Lake Road, your way down, you know, towards Fuquay, so you're not really coming into Holly Springs at, at this intersection, you've already been in Holly Springs. And so it was our thought that saying welcome to kind of implies that you're now entering Holly Springs, whereas welcome to Holly Springs, works to meet welcome, you know, we change it to welcome. Welcome is just a general, you know, welcome, you're in Holly Springs. Um, so, just getting rid of that to, we felt conveyed the message better, that you're not now entering Holly Springs, you're just in Holly Springs. Um, of course, if council likes the welcome to, it's easy to put it back on, we can do that.
I get the welcome to, why you're not using welcome to, welcome Holly Springs, sounds like you're welcoming Holly Springs versus welcoming the people coming. So I, I don't have a better answer, is my problem.
Other comments?
With the five forty coming, um, would there be possible any, or are there any improvements that could happen that would impact the amount of easement we have and, and sign positioning?
So, we have verified with our engineering department that the road cross-section proposed for Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road will not impact the location of our easement, so that we are, we are clear from any of those improvements.
Okay.
Yeah, are we gonna be widening this area at all? I mean, I know we could move the signs, but is this a project we'd want to do right now?
I will phone a friend.
So the curb line that's set here is the ultimate curb line, so there's not an anticipated widening that would impact these signs.
Okay.
Um, there's, along the hair teater, frontage, yeah, we've covered that, yeah. Um, everything that five forty's doing, there's lengthening turn lanes.
But I mean, I just meant as far as us widening Sunset Lake, but I know we could move them, I was just wondering if there's any time...
The curb line's set.
Yeah, okay.
And our, our easements at the C V S and the Dollar Tree corner are actually much larger than the other two corners, so we, we have the opportunity to set the sign back from the intersection, so it's not kinda right there on top of the sidewalk where you would anticipate some, some conflicts if things needed to be widened.
Okay.
Okay. You good? Go.
Did, did we settle on a welcome or a welcome to? Any preference?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, so blue back and welcome.
Blue welcome, or welcome blue.
Got it.
Nice, nice job incorporating more of the town.
Yes, thank you for your comments, that was very helpful.
Yeah.
Motion to approve final design of the primary and secondary gateway signs for the northeast gateway sign project as presented, in blue.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. It's a blue moon. Uh, item ten E, new business, appointment of interim town manager, John Shafan, and I'd ask you to retain the last comment until after we have a few things on other business, et cetera.
Yeah, we move that to, uh, closed session, because we're gonna go in closed session.
Yeah, yeah, at that point.
You can go ahead and do the other business.
You wanna do it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, other business, I got a couple, but I wanna do one in the beginning and one at the end. Real briefly, I, I was saddened today to see the public comment information that you heard. Um, in my opinion, this has been a dispute going over six or seven years, it is personal and it is political. I will respond and tell you the rest of the story later on, because there is another side to that story, as you might have guessed, and then maybe you might not have. Um, so anyway, I'll get back at you on that. Uh, let me finish up, but the rest of you right now, other business, and I've got something else to say. Please.
The I, the I R S extended the tax deadline to tomorrow night because of some systems issues, so if you have not done your taxes yet, you have one more day.
I don't wanna hear it.
I saw that pop up as breaking news, just in case you haven't done them yet.
Oh, good point.
Well, um, this is Chuck's last meeting.
You got that, say.
All right. I, I just wanted to thank you.
Yeah, you can do the chair.
Just wanted to thank you. Uh, when I first met you, I was on the baseball field as coaches, playing against, when we, on the basketball court, we were coaches, playing against, and now at town council, we were working together, and, um, I wanna thank you for all the support that you've given me, um, over the years, and it's been a, a pleasure to work, uh, with you side by side, and, um, your expertise, your heart, and what you, uh, how you work with your staff and the residents, um, I, I, you know, sad to see you go, but, uh, you're a true professional. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Anything else? Because I had something I wanna say too.
Sure.
Kinda similar comments, but you did very well. I mean, I feel like I'm double-headed here. Uh, Charles Spencer Simmons. Bet you didn't know that, did you? I have more later, but not tonight.
The third.
The third, well, that's true too, yes, thank you.
Oh, wow, thank you, John.
Uh, you came to Holly Springs in two thousand and one as an assistant town manager.
I did.
You can correct me if I'm wrong on that, it is. I've did a lot of research, but you're not gonna hear the whole thing tonight. Over those sixteen years, you did a great job in the role of town manager from the standpoint of growth, healthy financial numbers, town awards, staff morale, and future guidance. Many happy and healthy years in retirement for you, Debbie, and the family. Stay in touch, thank you, and you will be missed. Mayor Dick Sears.
Thank you, sir.
And now, manager's report.
Wow, um, this is a little awkward.
Of course.
It's, um, I've probably been to close to one thousand public meetings or council meetings of some sort over the years, um, and this being the last regular one, it, it just has a, has a different feel to it. Uh, I would've liked for it to have been about a twenty-minute meeting, but it happened to be a little bit longer tonight, it seemed like every project that I've ever worked on came up tonight, but...
Well, we're gonna skip the next one.
We got, we got a lot, we got a lot of business to do.
We're gonna skip the next meeting anyway, so...
Um, I, I love Holly Springs. Uh, I'll forever be grateful for the opportunity that, that I've had to, to work here, um, and to essentially build a town. Um, when I came to Holly Springs, to be honest with you, I, before coming to Holly Springs, I was contemplating maybe getting out of the public sector and actually getting into some private sector work, uh, because I, I was at a midpoint in my career. I'd been, um, you know, in public service for about fourteen years at the time, uh, and you're right, I started, I came in as the assistant manager, and, um, within about six months of being here, I was like fully committed, fully engaged, because there was so much going on, uh, that the positivity, the optimism of the community, it's really contagious, um, and, you know, I just wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you to, to this, to the members of this council who have always, I feel like, given me an opportunity to express my opinion. They've always been very supportive, very, um, very respectful, I, I hope that's, that you, you feel that, 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 but that always went both ways. Uh, certainly, I want to thank, uh, former members of the town council. Uh, some of you, uh, actually voted to hire me as the town manager, I believe two of you did. Thank you so much for the vote of confidence then. It's, it meant, it meant a lot to me, and, uh, you know, I wanna just say tonight, you know, I feel sort of a heavy heart because Carl Dean did not get a chance to sit here and, and, you know, retire, because he left us so quickly, um, and it broke all of our hearts, but, um, I would not be here tonight if it were not for Carl. I can, I can honestly say that. Uh, he gave me my first job as an intern when I worked in Burke County, uh, he was the assistant county manager there at the time, and, uh, we, we developed that relationship, and it really, um, you know, continued through the years. Uh, so my, so my thoughts are with him, uh, tonight as well. Um, probably my most special thanks are to the members of the staff. Um, I can't say enough the gratitude and the appreciation that I have for your unfailing support and dedication and really just professionalism. Uh, it's, it's been consistent since I've been here and, and, when I started in two thousand and one, and it's, and it's never stopped, and I think, over the years, there's a lot of you that were here when I got here in two thousand and one, and, and some of you arrived later, but, uh, I feel like we've, we've grown together. Um, I feel like I'm a better person, I'm a better manager, certainly, uh, because I've had an opportunity to work with you and to, uh, to learn from you. Um, so I can't thank you enough. I, that, this is, that's the greatest asset Holly Springs has, is, is, is the staff that we, that we have in place and the passion and dedication that they have, it's unwavering. Uh, so many of the things that we take for granted today, I think, are the result of the efforts of our, of our staff. They make us all look good, they make, they certainly make me look good, I feel like they make the, the council look good and, and the town as well. Uh, and finally, the citizens. It, it, we're public servants, first and foremost, that's our mission, we're, we're a public service organization, and I feel like it's a real privilege to, to be able to work and serve in a community like Holly Springs. Uh, and I just wanted to take this moment, uh, at this particular meeting to, to say thanks to all of our residents as well, uh, many of whom I have, I, I, I call friends, uh, as well as, well as members of the business community, uh, also. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you.
May I suggest we stand and give it up? And when I grow up, I wanna be just like you. Uh, counselor, I think you're on.
So now you gotta replace him, uh, at least temporarily, uh, that's right, so state law does require you to have a manager, um, and it does, um, while you, you're not even gonna appoint anybody, um, you, you may want to adjourn to closed session to discuss, um, which state law allows you to do, to discuss the quality, character, performance of any employee, prospective employee that, um, that, uh, you'd like to fill that role. Um, it, it would be most efficient if you were to have those discussions, um, and then adjourn, uh, the closed session and reopen the general session and, and, um, make your motion to appoint an interim manager while you're, um, engaged in your search for your permanent manager. So if somebody wants to make a motion pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen dot eleven, A six, um, to discuss, uh, prospective, um, a, a prospective employee to fill the role as interim town manager.
So John, if we make a decision tonight, will we have to come back here tonight?
We would just adjourn if anybody's left here waiting to discuss, we either, you know, either we can all move back here and, and talk, or we can just open the doors to where we normally have the closed session, and say, we're now in open session.
Okay.
And, and our decision, if we make a decision tonight, our decision would be... our decision would be made, posted, or made available for anybody wondering tomorrow?
I think you can do it.
Probably could get it out there tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can do it. Wouldn't be the whole detail of this whole-
No, no, just so. I mean, people don't want to hang out.
Yeah, we could do that little bit, yes.
Yeah.
We had also, are we doing other closed session stuff as well? Because we had talked about some evaluations.
So there is an economic development recruitment. The economic development director wants to address you on the, on a prospective economic development recruitment issue.
Can we do that first?